I'd like to call our August 12th Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting into session. At this point in time, I'd like to call on our chaplain, Commissioner Trey Gooch. He's going to come forward and lead us in prayer, and then he will lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Members of the audience, please stand. He'll lead us in Pledge of Allegiance to the American flag and then to the Tennessee flag, which you'll be on the board for you to repeat. You're recognized, chaplain.
And Father, as you know, tonight, as in many nights before, we have some very difficult decisions to make. And Father, sometimes it can be kind of scary without responsibility. We think, did we make the right decision? Did we make the wrong decision? And so may we seek your guidance in everything that we do, so when everything is said and done, we have peace with our choice. Father, our community continues to be ravaged by opioid addiction and opioid-induced suicide. And Father, the effects of this is so horrific, it must come from Satan. Knowing that, we know we can defeat it. So some way, somehow, if you allow the Holy Ghost not just to seep into the hearts of these addicts, but into the chemical makeup of their brain, and give them a sense of peace and hopefulness, so that through you, and through their friends, and through their families, they can defeat this. Father, tonight, I would like to dedicate this prayer to Phil Valentine, who is on, I don't want to say his deathbed, but very, very critical condition from the COVID virus. And so, Father, with him and all other people who are suffering this illness, would you please heal them and bring them back to their natural place in life? But ultimately, Father, we pray for the day that every knee will bow, every tongue confess that Jesus is Lord, and it's through his name that we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is second, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three white stars from a field of blue, God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Thank you, chaplain. Everybody be seated. We would like to extend a warm welcome to all of our guests tonight. Thank you for coming and attending. The first item this evening is our roll call. Madam Clerk, if you're prepared, please call the roll.
Commissioner David Gammon.
Present.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P. Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Curly.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Allen. Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Key.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino.
Here.
Twenty present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have a quorum, and we're prepared to take care of the business of Rutherford County. At this point in time, reading and approving of the minutes, Chairman Protam Jeff Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Katrin. There was one typo, a name misspelled, that has been corrected. With that correction, I find those minutes to be in order, and I move that we dispense with the reading, and they be adopted as presented.
You've heard the motion. Is there a second? We have a second from Commissioner Rather. Any questions? Without objection. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Next, members, we have item F, is a resolution of appreciation for Greg Brooks of the Rutherford County Highway Department. Commissioner Johnson, as you're making your way forward, I'd like to make a few comments before he reads the resolution. And I believe Road Superintendent Brooks, if you wouldn't mind, please come on up, and anybody else you've brought along with you, we'd like to recognize you. And, members, if you haven't been out to Plainview, and any of our guests, please go out there, because what we're about to talk about is the effort that our road superintendent did. He took upon himself a task that was like any other that I've seen since I've been around county government. Y'all come on up and spread, and spread across either side. And he negotiated the right-of-ways. If you know where Plainview is out in the Christiana community, it's very rural, the roads are rural. But for keeping the safety of our children, and the parents, and everybody going to and from that location, this crew, and the superintendent, and the board, which Commissioner Johnson is one of those members. And Commissioner Bratcher is here. Anybody else on the road board here? We'd like to recognize them as well, but they dipped into their ending fund balance. And if you hadn't have done what you did of purchasing the right-of-ways, and widening the roads, and making it safer, and we put that out to bid, we'd still be getting those roads done, and that school's had to be open just two weeks ago, or last week, whenever it opened. So our hats off to you. This commission applauds you. Now, what Road Superintendent asked me to do is that our drone, Air Force, actually went out and took some before videos. He put the drone up and showed the construction as you're starting to cut the roads in. So we'd like to thank our director of our, is he here tonight? Michael? Michael's not here, but he flew the drone over and showed. And what we'd like to show you is the before and after of the road system, of the infrastructure getting, so our buses and our parents could travel and bring their kids safely to that location. It's, this is, hopefully, commissioners, we need to see this, because when the school board brings us their next project, this is part of it that needs to be in their package, not, we build a school, and it's up to the county commission to do it. This needs to be in their package, and we approve on the total amount before we go to the bond market. So we've got it queued up. If we could just see briefly what the roads look like that you all have done before and after. Superintendent, if you want to give us a kind of a play-by-play.
Well, I did have the opportunity to preview the video, but this is Miller Road starting at I-24 at Epps Mill Road. These two curves being realigned, you might see just in the upper part of that picture right there, that's where the road was before they made the improvements and softened the curves up, so that school buses could stay in their lane of travel going around these two curves out here. After picture that you're looking at currently.
Okay, so we're doing the after.
After the improvements.
After the improvements. So we're doing the after before.
Two 11-foot travel lanes with four feet of paved shoulder.
And previous to that, it was not wide enough to get two school buses passing each other.
Miller Road was, however it was, it was still narrow and a little treacherous. Like I said, those two curves right there were impossible for two buses to pass on and remain in their lane because of how sharp the curves were. So Miller, this section of Miller was one of the better roads that existed when we got there. As we come up on this intersection of Miller and Sledge, you will see that we've made some, created some turn lanes in all directions to allow for some storage and stacking of the traffic that we know is coming. Rather was getting low on the drone right here, so we're a little close to the ground. Okay, now, this is Epps Mill Road. That bridge right there was a tear-out and replace that we just came across. This started at Wayside and is moving back toward Plainview Road and Buchanan Estates. You might be familiar with that. This was a very narrow section. It's hard to imagine what this actually looked like before these guys did this work out there, but it was maybe 16 feet wide, almost no nonexistent drainage. You'll see where we've created turn lanes at this intersection also with the storage capacity and knowing that, you know, that not only, well, there's somebody working out there.
That's me.
Imagine that.
Yeah.
But, you know, not only, not only do we just improve these roads, we improve them to a level that we feel like will support all the new schools that will come to this campus, and all the new development that we know will follow. Video evidence that we actually did work on the job there. Well, it's not completely before. Actually, as you can see, it's in progress right there, but the pavement there, you can see that, you know, that now there's the after, so.
So you actually negotiated the right-of-way purchase you did under, you worked with the utilities?
We hired a professional appraiser to come in and appraise every piece of property that we knew we were going to have to acquire right-of-way from, and then we approached all of those individuals with those appraisals. And for the most part, everybody was receptive. You know, at first, there was a little bit of, there was a little bit of resistance, but as we, as these gentlemen moved through this project, and people saw the professional level that they conducted themselves and performed this work, it got easier to convince these folks that, you know, we're going to leave you better than we found you. Plainview Road, still a work in progress right here. We, like I said, we designed to accommodate the traffic that we know is coming when these other schools come online, which it's hard for anybody to predict exactly when the next school will be built. I've talked to Mr. Treley several times, and, you know, he's doing the best he can, but, you know, the schools have, the new builds have to follow the growth, so. But someday, things stay on the trajectory they're on, this county stays on the trajectory it's on right now, then we'll have, you know, we'll have 16-year-old drivers out here, and I think that's what we tried to design this thing for.
Absolutely.
See that some of these roads have been completely topped out, and some of them still have the last layer of asphalt that has to be installed. But all the widening was accomplished, and all the striping was in place prior to the school opening, and our plan is to go back out there during fall break and finish the little bit of final layer of asphalt that we have yet to do. This obviously is the school property, and, you know, while these men and others at the Highway Department did do a massive amount of work out there, you can't lose sight of the fact that while we were doing, you know, seven miles of road improvements, somebody slipped out there and built a whole school.
Yes.
Don't worry about that, Trey. And that's impressive. I mean, that's a short amount of time. Look at that facility right there. I mean, that's, you know.
Fifteen months when we were out there, correct?
Fifteen months.
Fifteen months, yeah.
Fifteen months, which is, you know, really exceeds our expectations by, mine, by seven or eight months.
And probably seven.
My project manager said we're looking at two years. And here we are, you know, 15 months in.
And probably several million dollars more taxpayers would have had to pay.
Oh, yeah.
An Otter Lane, that is their mascot name, right? Otters.
Otters Lane, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Let's give them a round of applause. Commissioner Johnson, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if you will indulge me for just a minute or two, welcome, and this is for everyone at home that's watching, and everybody up here. I counted, and there's six wherazis here in this resolution, but I just wanted to say a few remarks. I've had the privilege, I'll start my 22nd year on the road board in September, and Mr. Bratcher's right behind me, and I've had the privilege of working with Greg for nine of those years, and 973.13 miles of road in this county falls under his jurisdiction, plus all the responsibilities of the Public Works Department that this august body formed and provides the money to operate that. So this, and I operated under the premise a long time ago, that, and you're welcome to laugh if you want to, okay? One attaboy cancels out about five all-hex.
Yeah, I hope that's right.
I thought that was funnier than that. Good grief. You know, so this is a huge attaboy, and if y'all indulge me with the wherazis. Resolution of appreciation, Rutherford County Highway Department, whereas construction began on April 15, 2020, for the Plainview Schools Project, and whereas the Plainview Schools Project consumed a total of 258 working days with seven miles of the road improved, all during the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas on September 18, 2019, the probable construction costs were $7,992,000, and whereas the cost to date is under $5 million, utilizing funds from the Rutherford County Highway Department, catch this, saving the county taxpayers a considerable amount. And whereas all of Rutherford County Highway Department contributed to completion of the Plainview Schools Project, and whereas a dedicated team of six completed the lion's share, including Thomas Lover, a project manager, Carrie Henderson, heavy equipment operator, Russell Yates, heavy equipment operator, James Alexander, heavy equipment operator, Robinson Equipment Operator, and Johnny McCulloch, equipment operator. Now therefore, being resolved by the Rutherford County Commission, Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 12th day of August 2021, does hereby extend sincere appreciation to Superintendent Greg Brooks and the entire Rutherford County Highway Department for their dedicated service to the Rutherford County and its citizens. Revolve this 12th day of August 2021. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Second, all 21, 20, how many commissioners we have here tonight? All 20. On the second, any, without objection. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
I have very little to add, but I do have a couple of things. So the work, the construction part of this project actually started April 15, 2020. So that's 258 working days during the COVID pandemic, like Mr. Johnson said. And we did improve, major improvements to seven miles of road out there. And we feel like these improvements will support not only the current elementary school that's been built out there, but any new schools that should, and will come to that campus. We also feel like that these roads will support the schools, the traffic that the development that these schools typically trigger. So we didn't just go out there and put a Band-Aid on this thing. We fixed it forever. It should last, it should just be a maintenance issue moving forward. And I cannot tell you how impressed I am with this group of men that went out there. Now, everybody at the Highway Department had to play a part in this, because, you know, when we, when we took these men away from other duties and projects, they, you know, the other guys had to fill in the voids that that left. So, like I said, my project manager here, Mr. Thomas Lover, said, you know, we're looking at, we're looking at two years. He told me that April 15. I said, we got to August. So, but, but he pulled it off, and he pulled it off because he had a good, he had a good team of men out there with him, and he's a good leader. We also need to recognize the fact that these guys were out there every day in that community out there, and I got absolutely zero complaints about them. Not one complaint came in from the citizens of this county about these men out there doing their jobs. They didn't throw down a hamburger wrapper in somebody's field, they didn't, you know, they didn't act foolish. It was, so that, to me, that's a big deal, when you sit and have to answer that phone call. I mean, I really appreciate these guys. And I also want to give a shout out to Middle Tennessee Electric. They stepped in and moved some of our things in front of some of the other things that they had to allow us to continue working. Once, once we got the easements established, they were very quick to respond, to get their crews out there to get the poles that had to be moved, moved. When we designed this thing, we designed it in a manner that, to minimize how many, you know, those utility poles would have to be relocated, but it is unavoidable to have to move some of them. And also, I need, I need to mention, because I know that, you know, they're at almost all of our meetings, and they work with us all the time, consolidate the utility district. They had to move some water line that was old and was going to wind up in harm's way. We were going to try to work around it, but they stepped up, moved it on their dime. So we can't forget that. And then some of the people that are not here tonight, that I can, that our Highway Department, our Public Works Department employees, that I cannot not mention, is Ms. Mary Hickerson. I know you all know her. She's the department coordinator down there. Especially during the last couple, three months of this project, you know, I was out of the office almost every day. So she managed that all on her own, which she typically does. She just normally just tells me what we're doing, but, but actually, she really, you know, she never complained, and she had all of this, all of this new, all these new line items in our budget that she had to manage in addition to the ones that she typically does. So you see her, give her a pat on the back. She really, she really does a good job down there. Ms. Phyllis Foss is our Public Works person that, she was involved in the Halls Hill Pike Project years ago, where the county went out and improved Halls Hill, a large portion of Halls Hill Pike. So she was already, already schooled on this right-of-way acquisition, and how to approach people, and, you know, moving through that process. Could not have done it without Ms. Phyllis. So anytime you see them, give them, give them a thumbs up, because they really did a good job. We couldn't have done without them. And obviously, all the other men, women there at the Highway Department. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
I think that's enough of your time, I'm sure.
Thank you all. We certainly appreciate it. Next, members, we have item number G on the agenda. National Recovery Month Resolution. Commissioner Craig Harris, Chairman Harris, if you'll come forward. He has a resolution to read, and I do believe we have queued up a one-minute video, and that should take us right into our public hearing tonight, right at 6:30. So Chairman Harris, you're recognized.
Ladies and gentlemen, y'all know me very well. You know how I am about the opioid epidemic that we're facing, the drug addiction mental illness. I have tried to be the forefront and try so hard to bring awareness to this problem. I haven't been very successful, and one of the things that I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to get with organizations, I'm trying to get with parents, anybody listening to me, and bring awareness to this problem. You heard our chaplain, my good friend, Commissioner Gooch, in his prayer, talked about it. And just to give you a little idea of what we're facing, because so many people don't face it because it doesn't, it's not with them until it hits them in the face. When it hits you in the face, then we're there. We get it, and we're trying to help. But a lot of people don't understand it, because it doesn't involve them, you know, some of them head-on. We all know somebody that's addicted. We all know someone, someone that's addicted, and I'm asking that we come together as a commission, who I have so much respect for this body. This, this commissioners have done an outstanding job, very supportive of me, and I'm thankful. And I want us to come together and to recognize these people that have worked so hard in putting on a recovery fest. Just to give you a real quick update, we've had, last year, we had 120 deaths. We had 67 suicides and 847 ODs. That's just for 2020. As of right now, to this very day, we had 18 deaths in July, but we're looking at surpassing 170 deaths. So it's getting worse. It's not getting better. And I keep telling everybody all the time, man, the storm, don't worry about the storm coming, because the storm's already here. And then we had to come together. And I think organizations like Prevention Coalition and Putting on Recovery Fest, I think this is something that we could all get together and work with, and support, and help this organization. And I wanted a resolution for them, because Recovery Fest is a gathering put on by the prevention and other nonprofits, and it's to, intended to provide a safe, sober environment for those in recovery from mental illness and substance abuse, and their loved ones. It is September 18 from 10 to 2, and will feature various speakers and organizations. I want to read this resolution, and I'd like you to support it. I had made a donation to this organization in the names of this commission. We will be providing food for this thing, for this recovery fest, and I wanted to do that on behalf of Rutherford County Commissioners. So, whereas recovery from mental illness and substance abuse disorders, including co-occurring disorders, is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas treatment of, treatment and recovery services for mental and substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders is effective, and people can and do recover in our area around the nation. Whereas addressing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders, co-occurring disorders, is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. Whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance abuse disorders and co-occurring disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and encourage those in need of help to seek appropriate treatment and recovery support services. Whereas it's an estimated 88,000 people in Rutherford County are affected by these conditions. And whereas to help more people with lived experience, achieve and sustain recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners invite all residents of Rutherford County to participate in the National Recovery Month, and now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners in its regular session on this 12th day of August 2021, do hereby proclaim the month of September 20 as 21. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Serrito, without objection, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I believe you have a one-minute video.
Yeah, one of the things also, I went to the mayor and I asked him, I said, I don't want to form a committee, and I don't want to get a board, I want a team. And so he said absolutely. And so, he said absolutely, and supported me on that. Recovery Court, Tricia Breeding, probation, Alyssa Phillips, Lori Filippo from Recovery Court, and Mayor Ketchum, we have formed a team with our PLI and our production staff. And we came up with ways to try to bring awareness. So, we created a production, and it's not done, but I have a one-minute excerpt, so you can see kind of what I'm doing. This will be played in schools, and this will be, you know, able to, to put on our public TV, and hopefully, it'll go further than that. Is it ready?
Let's queue it up.
Looking back, I had a beautiful childhood. My mom was my best friend.
Lot of love and love in my house growing up.
I had a relationship with a boyfriend that was abusive. I started using drugs and alcohol when I was about 11 or 12.
Got on my own and started, started experiencing some things that I knew absolutely nothing
It got bad really, really quick.
It progressed pretty fast.
I realized I had a problem when I was sitting in my bedroom with a needle in my arm, praying to God to please make it stop.
That's just a start. It's about 30 minutes long, but I just wanted to give you an idea of what my vision is and how I want to bring this across. Ladies and gentlemen, this is your, this is your citizens, these are people you know. They live right here in Rutherford County. And unfortunately, that story is way more than these three people right here. So, thank you. I've talked enough. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Chairman. One minute, powerful stuff. Members, it's past, a few minutes past 6:30, and it's time for our public hearing. So, I'll move to our public hearing at this point in time. Mr. Demasi, if you will, please come forward, and you're recognized, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, Mayor Ketchum, members of the commission. We have two public hearings for your consideration tonight. The first is by Mr. Dan Bobo for Old South Properties. This is located along Stewart Creek Road. Current zoning is residential medium density. The proposed zoning is planned unit development for a residential subdivision. Size of the site's approximately 161 acres. The applicant is proposing to develop a 159-lot residential, single-family subdivision on this property called Brewer Point. Minimum house sizes will be 2,000 square feet for medium lots and 2,700 square feet for large lots. Medium lots would be a minimum of 10,500 square feet, whereas the large lots would be 15,000 square feet minimum. Approximately 66 acres of this are being set aside as natural area due to the steep slopes of the property, primarily on the eastern side of the site. There are some, there are some proposed amenity areas and stormwater ponds throughout the development. The pattern book is on your iPads. I would call your attention to that. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of discussion on this, and I'll get to that in just a second as to why. During the Planning Commission's meeting, most of the comments that we received were about traffic safety, the condition of Stewart's Creek Road, Stewart Creek Road, excuse me, drainage in the area, the character of the area, and the density of the development and size of the lots. During the Planning Commission's discussion, there were questions that were asked about the scope of the traffic study, the adequacy of public facilities for the planned development, and also the condition of Stewart Creek Road. After discussion, there was actually a failed motion to deny, failed for lack of a second, and the Planning Commission did ultimately recommend approval of the request by a vote of 5, 4, and 1 against. Like I say, I usually go into a little bit more detail with this. The reason I'm not going to do that tonight is because the developers of this project, their development team, one of the members of that team, Mr. Clyde Roundtree, is not able to be here tonight, but he did pre-record a video that he wanted to show. The commission's probably going to go over a lot of the same things I would have anyway, so I didn't really see the need to basically double up on everything. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to do that now, or prior, or after the public hearing has been opened. I'll leave that to your discretion. But in the meantime, before or after, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I can do it before.
So, that video should be, should be pretty much ready to queue up. I talked with Cable 19 folks earlier, and I know it's pretty much ready to go. I will say, it's a lengthy video, probably about somewhere around 14 minutes long, so...
Let's, let's go ahead. IT, queue that up.
Hello, my name's Clyde Roundtree. I'm the planner with Hudson Steel Engineering. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present to you Brewer Point PUD. This is a project that we've been working on for a few months, and we're grateful for the opportunity to work with Old South Homes with Dan Bobo and our design team with Steve Steele from Hudson Steel Engineering. Would also like to thank the planning staff at Rutherford County Planning for allowing us to present this opportunity to have a video versus me being there in person. Tonight is a special occasion for our family. My daughter is at a white coat ceremony, my wife and I are attending that ceremony in Arkansas, and the planning staff allowed me to present via video, so I'm grateful for that opportunity. Oh, no further ado, I'd like to walk you through the following slides to talk to you about Brewer Point PUD. Thank you. The existing conditions picture location slide shows an aerial view of the property. As you can see from the aerial view, a large portion of the property is open pasture land. However, towards the eastern portion of the property, it is densely wooded vegetation. That is significant in the fact that that is where the most geographic change takes place on the property, and that is the area that we're preserving as a naturalistic area that will serve this subdivision with passive recreation in the form of trails. The existing conditions A slide, which is the next slide, shows four different images of or around the property. The image in the top left, image number A, is a look across the pastoral character of the property, back to the rolling hills in the rear towards the east. Slide B is a picture of a home that is adjacent to the property in the rear of the property. Slide C, picture C, is looking across that same field where the step field will be going eventually. And then, D is a picture of a home that is a new subdivision located in close proximity to the development called Pembroke Farms. If we can look at the next slide, existing conditions B. Picture E is a view looking down Stewart's Creek Road to the east, right into that new area where we're planning on having a three-way stop. This is also the approximate location where the turn lane will be located for the primary entrance. Picture F shows the current status of the curve that is at the bend in our property to the west. This curve will be realigned. Right now, it's a fairly radical curve. What we're proposing is a more relaxed curve, and we also mentioned that we're going to dedicate more right-of-way. So, in the future, a thoroughfare plan anticipates an enlargement of Stewart's Creek Road space will be available. Picture G is an image of the adjacent neighborhood, just a few homes. And then, H is the same, looking out of the adjacent neighborhood across to where our property is. This next slide, titled Site Plan, is the overall design of the acreage. From the site data table, it is determined that the lot overall is 160 acres. On that, we're anticipating building 159 homes. The overall density for the development is under one unit per acre. If we look at the planned, looking from basically east to west, I'll walk you through it. On the eastern portion of the property, that was on the right-hand side of the exhibit, are 66 acres of natural area that will remain green space for the passive recreation of those who live in the neighborhood. This area is densely wooded currently and has a significant amount of slope, but it was the developer's desire to preserve this as a natural area. As we move to the left, further towards the west, the lots in the round, the brown-red color are the medium-sized lots. Those lots are a minimum of 10,500 square feet. They have access to the passive recreation area, and the two green spaces that see the transition from the two colors are primarily drainage areas, but also preserve green space. As we move further to the left, the lots that are colored orange are the large lots. These lots will be a minimum of 15,000 square feet. The two primary access points are in this lot area, and the amenity center that includes the pavilion and the playground, as well as the mail kiosk, are located in this area. In terms of all the residential units, all the homes will have sidewalks on both sides of the street, full access to both the passive amenity on the 66 acre, acres of natural land, as well as the amenity in the middle of the development. As we head further to the left, that is the step field. Now, it's over 20 acres of land that will remain just as it is today, a level pastoral area. There are no trees in that area currently. It's basically an open pastoral field. However, we made a commitment that along the areas where existing vegetation occurs on the property lines, which applies to basically the southern portion of this property, as well as to a portion of the northern portion, and obviously, the eastern portion where all the existing woods are, we are going to preserve a 10-foot preservation easement to keep as much of the existing vegetation intact as is possible. That will allow the neighbors to know that what they're seeing now in terms of vegetation, if it's fairly dense along their property line, that should remain. There may be an exception where we have to run some sort of a drainage in that area, through that area, but the goal of the development team is to preserve that natural easement. And lastly, as I've mentioned before, the, on the, towards the step field, towards the upper corner, that left-hand corner, you can see the old alignment of the road, which right now is a very sharp 90-degree bend. The developer has committed to relaxing that road, that road alignment to provide a much safer and smoother curve along the edge of our property, as well as provide an additional right-of-way for the time when Stewart's Creek Road will be expanded in the future. This next slide, Architectural Plans, Medium Lot, shows the architectural character of the homes we are proposing. They're depicted in the pictures on the right-hand side. In the middle is the Dimension Concept Plan, that, as I mentioned, shows the parking, shows the lot in depth, and shows the lot width. On the medium lots, our width is 75 feet and our depth is 140 feet. We have a 35-foot front setback, which allows us to have four cars in the parking lot outside of the garage. And we're also recommending a minimum of a 7.5-foot medium-side setback and a 20-foot rear setback. The minimum home size on these lots will be 2,000 square feet. The next slide, labeled Architectural Elevations, Large Lot, shows the quality of the larger homes that are depicted in the orange area as mentioned. They're towards the western edge of the development in terms of houses that are concerned. We also showed the Dimension Concept Plan for larger lots. These lots will be 100 feet wide and 150 feet deep. Their minimum setback will be 35 feet, which allows us for four cars to be parked in the driveway. We'll also have 10-foot side setbacks and a 20-foot rear setback. The minimum lot size for these lots will be 2,700 square feet. Also, just for clarity, all the homes will be masonry with vinyl accents on the trim and soffit. The next slide is the green space allocation. It's important to note for us that there are 160 acres of current farmland. Over 38% of the site is committed to green space once the development is completed. Over 66 acres of the site will be usable open space in the natural area, with an additional half-acre amenity area, which has the pavilion, the mail kiosk, and the playground area. The green represents all the green spaces that will be used throughout development. Some will be used for drainage, some will be used for passive recreation, and some will be used for the step field. But as you can see, a large amount of area is dedicated towards keeping the site green. In conclusion, we've worked hard to work with the neighbors and try to satisfy their concerns, to work with the planning staff to try to satisfy their concerns. And I'd like to walk through nine of the things that we've done through this process, five of which are since the last time we presented at Planning Commission, and four were already changes that we've made after the neighborhood meeting. First of all, since last time meeting at the Planning Commission, we removed two lots that were fronting Stewart's Creek Road. We realized that could potentially create a hazard in terms of cars backing out onto Stewart's Creek Road, and that was the planning staff's recommendation that those be removed. And they were removed, and those lots were reallocated throughout the site. Also, we removed one lot in the, in the medium-sized lots to create a stub street that'll connect property to the north in the future. So, we added this stub street. We committed to adding a three-way stop sign at Stewart's Creek Road that allows at that corner, that sharp corner, right at the edge of our property, right where Stewart's Creek heads north, you know, past our main entrance, we have a secondary entrance there, and we were committing to making that more of a 90-degree access point with a three-way stop. So, those coming down Stewart's Creek Road will stop, as well as those coming out of the subdivision. So, that is to help with the speed of Stewart's Creek Road. Also, it was concern of both the planning staff and the neighbors of some safety concerns. So, this makes that corner no longer as dangerous, and allows the stop signs to work to alleviate some of the speed along that road. Fourth, we committed to adding more right-of-way. Ms. Ron Allen, who we spoke to throughout this process, is concerned about the overall quality of Stewart's Creek Road, and we realized that if we can dedicate more right-of-way, that provides Ms. Allen and other, other county officials the ability to, in the future, on the major thoroughfare plan, have, in the major thoroughfare plan, to have plenty of room for Stewart's Creek Road to be expanded in the future. So, the, the team decided that was not an issue, that we provide more right-of-way along our frontage. Mr. Bobo agreed to that. We also have committed to a turn lane coming into the development. That may be not as necessary as it was before prior to having the three-way stop. However, we feel like the turn lane, in addition to the three-way stop, will make traffic along Stewart's Creek Road much safer and much more fluid. Now, after the neighborhood meeting, there were several changes that were made as well in the pattern book. We reduced the overall quantity of lots by 19. So, we, density was an issue, and we took away 19 lots of the overall development. We increased the size of the minimum-sized lots. They went from 7,500 square feet to 10,500 square feet, so that basically made the minimum-sized lot larger. The larger lots remained 15,000 square feet. We committed to providing a 10-foot preservation easement along the perimeter of the property, not along Stewart's Creek Road, because there's no, there's no vegetation there, it's basically an open pasture, but along the perimeters, along the north and the south, as well as the east, there's existing vegetation. The primary impact on the north side and on the south side, where there are residences now, that buffer that is currently there, the landscape, being the natural landscape that's currently there, we're going to provide a 10-foot easement to make sure that that remains undisturbed. There may be one or two occasions where we have to swale in that area, but our, our goal is to preserve as much of the natural landscape that is there currently. And lastly, the step field is along Stewart's Creek Road, and the neighbors were a little concerned over that, what is a step field in terms of, does it have odor, you know, how does that feel? And the fact is, is that step systems are really just like any other septic field. They don't have any sort of odor associated with them. But they did ask that if there's anything we could do to kind of make that area a little bit nicer. And so, we've elected to put a split rail fence along Stewart's Creek Road that would wrap basically around the whole perimeter, that, that side of the, of the step field. We'll still have regular fencing once you're inside the property, but all along Stewart's Creek Road will be a split rail fence. So, there have been quite a few concessions that have already been made through the process. We feel like, we heard the neighbors, we responded to the neighbors' concerns, increasing the lot size, decreased the density. I think that was a win-win in every direction. And just responding to the staff comments as they came, and several of the commissioners. I'd like to thank the Planning Commissioners who weighed in on this and helped us refine our process and refine our product. And hopefully, at this point, we've met the concerns that they had to, on this particular project, and we're grateful for the opportunity to get their feedback and be able to implement as many of the changes as possible. Thank you for the opportunity to present at this time. If you have any questions, I will be present. However, Mr. Steve Steele from Hudson Steel will be in the audience, and he'll be able to answer questions you may have. And thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Demasi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing further to add, just if there were questions from the commission on this item.
Commissioner P.
First of all, I talked to some of the Planning Commissioners, and I noticed his vote was 5, 4. The changes that he mentioned in his presentation, was that taking place before the vote, or did these changes take place after this 5, 4 vote?
Well, a lot of the changes that he was talking about, as far as the removing of the 19 lots, increasing the size of the medium-sized... the 19 lots, increasing the size of the medium-sized lots from 7,500 to 10,500, the preservation easement, those kind of things, those were done prior to the public hearing. A lot of those were done prior, before the planning commission's meeting. Now, some of the other things, like he was talking about, the lots that fronted along Stewart Creek Road, the stub street to the north, the three-way stop at that second entrance, the extra right-of-way, and the turn lane was also something they committed to, but the other four were things that really had resulted after the meeting, that they came to us after the fact about.
Okay. That's pretty pertinent to me, because, you know, just talking to some of the planning commissioners, at least one told me they would have changed their vote, you know, after looking at this a little bit harder because of safety concerns and the roads. That's, that's why I'm trying to dig into this a little bit. Did y'all talk to our road board and Commissioner, Mr. Brooks, about any of these problems before y'all finalized this plan?
Well, we, right, we have a lot of, I mean, obviously, we have lots of conversation with Mr. Brooks regarding just the roads in general. Now, that specific improvement as far as the turn lanes go, we didn't have any specific conversations about that. Now, we did have some specific conversations with him regarding the proposed three-way stop that they're talking about doing. That's something that will have to be, and we told the engineering team this, that'd be something that they would have to, you know, work through the highway department, the road board on. We had a meeting with Mr. Brooks. He indicated that he was supportive of that change, but obviously, we'd have to work out the details on that, but he is aware of those, of those changes. Yes, sir.
Well, just speaking for myself, and the way that vote would have turned out, you know, I'm, I'm of the mind to vote no on that. However, I'm not sure, is this Mr. Gurley's district?
This is Mr. Gurley's district, yes, sir.
You know, I'll go along with what Joe would like, and I'll see that when he makes his, his motion one way or the other, but I'm very concerned about our roads. For one thing, I'm glad to see the turn lane going in there. I applaud them. But the way our growth is multiplying, I don't see us putting subdivisions in anywhere where we're not requiring turn lanes. Now, there may be instances where they're already there, or, you know, something, some reason not to, but I see no reason in these rural, narrow roads, especially, I mean, you saw those roads out there at Plainview. You know, I used to run fire engines up and down them, and there's a lot of those roads you go through. My mirrors on each side of the truck, we're hitting limbs on either, either side of the road. So, you know, that's my concern. I want to make sure that these roads are safe that we're developing. Thank you.
I have Commissioner Dodd, and then Commissioner Gurley, and then Commissioner Kush.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to clarify, Mr. P, the vote was five in favor, one opposed. It sounded as if the planning director said the vote was five to four, which, which suggested there was a great bit of opposition to Planning Commission. There was one vote opposed to approving, and that was the vote that was voted to deny previously that didn't get a second. So just want to clarify, the commission was five to one.
I appreciate that. And that was probably the way that I was saying it. I'm sorry, I said five-four, one against. That was, yeah, I'll try to, five in favor, one against. I'll be more cognizant of that in the future.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, I think a lot of this will be clarified when I make my motion after the public hearing.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kush, you good? Other questions for, from the commission, from, for Mr. Demasi? Seeing none, then I'll call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess, throw to public hearing on this request. Our public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you're for or against the proposed request. Seeing, yes, sir. Yes, sir, come around here to the well and identify yourself.
I haven't done this since college. Sorry, it's a little unnerving. My name is Lee Coram. Mr. Gurley, we've spoken a couple of times. I live at 2770 Stewart Creek Road, which is the house that they showed in the presentation, so my property adjoins the proposal. I'm not here to speak against development. I don't think there's any way to avoid development in Rutherford County. We live in a state that a lot of people are moving to for a lot of good reasons. And I'm not even against the current development. My concern lies with exactly what, what you said, is the road safety and just the sheer volume of houses and the span of, of space that they, they're proposing. And the reason that I put it that way is I've, I've lived there for quite some time, but my wife's family is the family that own the land that Pembroke Farms was built on. My mother-in-law lives right next door, which, by the way, that sub-road, that land will be ours, so that you have to wait about 40 years for me to sell that off. But nonetheless, you know, the green space is, is nice and all, but that, the land in the back of the property that won't be built on is solid rock and straight uphill. So I don't really count that in my assessment of common sense as land that should be cut off from the development. I don't feel that what they're proposing is wrong. I don't, I think the turning lane will solve a lot of the problems. I think the three-way stop's a little troublesome, it's right at the end of my driveway, but, you know, what are you going to do? So just common sense, I just came to speak against it only for the fact that 158, 160 homes in that area on that span of the road, it's a lot of density for the area. It's just, it's a lot. And I don't have any logical reason for drainage or, or anything other than maybe school zoning to argue against it, but I wanted to just come have my voice heard. I did go door-to-door to, I'd say 85% of my neighbors within walkable distance. I'd started a petition online. I'm happy to provide you with the, the link, and had over 270 signatures from about 200 families, which would be more families than represented in the new development, that were vehemently against it, but I think that that's kind of a wrong stance. The development's going to happen. It's just, is it the smartest way? Is it being planned the smartest way for the area and to meet the current, you know, the current social and, not social, that's the wrong way to put it, the, the current neighborhood, situation out there? But that's all I have. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak for or against? Please identify yourself for the record.
Mayor Ketchum, Steve Steele. Commissioners, thank you for letting me speak. I only rise to speak to let you know that if you have questions that I can address, I'll be glad to do it for you, as Claude mentioned. Thank you again.
You're welcome. Anyone else desiring to speak for or against this issue, please come forward. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed, and the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Mr. Gurley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make my motion and then give a brief explanation after that, after we get a second, if we get a second, on that. My motion is to approve with the following conditions, that there be turn lanes, that there be a three-way stop engineered, and that there be no direct entry lots onto Stewart's Creek Road. That is my motion.
You've heard the motion?
Second.
Got a second. Commissioner Piercy.
Yes, this has been a difficult one. As you saw, there's 160 or so acre, 161 acres. I've heard that you can't, the rest of it is not really developable. Well, maybe, maybe not. If you live where I live, there are developments a half-mile above my house that are on a hill that I never thought would grow anything but rattlesnakes, but there are hundreds of houses there. It's rock, right on out at the end of Morton, the Tucker Farm, the hill was cut down. I can't count the number of trucks the previous year that went by my house hauling rock away. So it's just a matter of desire. How bad do you want to do it? By current zoning, RM, that could be 2.9 houses per acre, I believe, somewhere around that, which would be 400 and something houses. When you take out for the roads and step system, you're probably still going to be able to build 300 and something houses on that property. This is 159 houses. I think, I've been involved with this from the get-go, and knowing that, number one, we're probably not going to stop any kind of development. That's pretty much a given right to some extent, but we can push the developer for concessions and to minimize certain issues that the neighborhood has. I think the developer has done that. They've been willing to give on quite a few things, including the lot size. The lot size is, the minimum lot size on the smaller lots is almost a quarter of an acre, and the larger ones are, meet the RM definition of building. As to Stewart's Creek Road, I rode a school bus in the early 60s on that road. It's different now. It's got asphalt on it instead of gravel, but it's the same, it's a, it's a 30-foot right-of-way. That includes the ditch lines, 18-foot roadbed. Superintendent Brooks has had 40 or more foot right-of-ways. Came in and really done some great improvements in my district and probably in your district too, but there's simply nothing to work with. I think it's good that the developer is willing to set aside right-of-way to, for future. I think if people along Stewart's Creek Road really want it done, then they're going to have to start conceding some right-of-way, and, because it's the exception that we did for Plainview. For a particular project directly involving a school, we normally don't acquire right-of-way. So that's something that I've, I've told the neighborhood, start talking it up about donating right-of-way, because that's a good hunk of cost right there. And so that's kind of the reason for this. I think in this portion that the developer has control over, I think we have answered a lot of the safety issues, and so therefore, I hope you consider it.
All right, you've heard the motion and explanation, and we have a second. Are there any other questions or discussion? Commissioner Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug, I would have one request for Huddleston Steel, if you don't mind. I was not able to attend the Planning Commission meeting when this issue or this project came up. I would have voted with Rhonda to vote against, I would have supported her motion to deny, only because of the safety issue. I was, I'm trying to remember, was Pembroke a subdivision that we looked at about three years ago?
It was roughly that long.
Okay. I remember when, when Pembroke came, came to us, we had real angst about those same two curves on Stewart's Creek then, and we were, you know, we, we were hesitant, we debated it at length, and we, we always kind of thought, oh, man, the next development that comes is going to have to do something. And this is that development. I am pleased with the added concessions that Huddleston Steel and Old South have brought since that meeting, so I feel very good about what they've done. So my ask is, would you have Huddleston Steel update that pattern book and please provide myself and Rhonda Allen a Word doc with those nine bullet points that they've added and put that in our mailbox?
I can, yes, sir.
So I can, so Rhonda, I can explain to Al, to Rhonda what has transpired, since she's not here, and then I can have that for mine.
I actually have that in a form of an email right now, and can email it to you, so I'd be happy to.
Are there other questions or discussion? Without objection, all those in favor, sing five, sing aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We have one other public hearing tonight. This is by Joe Swanson Jr. for Swanson Developments LP. This is located at 3912 Bradyville Pike. The existing zoning, similar to what we just looked at, is residential medium-density, RM, and this is also a planned development. The size of the site is approximately 122 acres. The applicant's proposing to develop a property into a 96-lot residential, single-family subdivision called Fox Camp Retreat. 72 of the units will be single-family detached dwellings, with the remaining 24 being single-family attached. All units are for purchase, with the attached units being sold as what we know as a horizontal property regime or condominium-type situation. In your staff comments on your iPads, you'll see I put a chart in there, kind of just giving you a breakdown of the detached versus the attached lots, as far as lot sizes, lot width, minimum dwelling unit size, which is 1,600 square foot for the detached units and 1,400 square feet for the attached. Minimum bedrooms would be three for the detached and two for the attached, and the garages, detached would have minimum two-car side-entry garages, and then the garage, I'm sorry, the attached units would have a minimum one car. Street lighting is being provided along with sidewalks along one side of all public streets. Open space and amenities, I'll get to in just a moment. A portion of the property, about five acres of this, is being left out of the rezoning. When you look at the pattern book that's on your iPads, you'll notice there's about a five-acre, so tract is being left off. That's going to be for future development. That'll be just tracked off from the site, it's not part of this. Again, the pattern book is in your, on your iPads for you to look at. There are two entrances to the development from Bradyville Pike. There will be no direct access to Bradyville Pike from either the townhome condominium units or lots 32 through 34, which actually back up to Bradyville Pike. Dilton Way is an adjacent subdivision, does cul-de-sac into the western side of the property. We did not feel that that was really a connection that needed to be made, was not warranted, so we did not require access along to that. There is a potential access point to the Stepsoils area from either Singleton Drive or Lytle Creek Drive to the eastern side of the property, when you look at the pattern book, but there will not be any access to the lots from that. That'll strictly be for access to the step system. The applicant did submit a traffic study with their proposal, with the recommendations being attached. Turn lanes have not been recommended, but I know there's been a lot of discussion about that today. I've also been talking with the applicant's design engineer, who was present, about the turn lanes on that particular development. Buffering and screening, since this is a single-family development primarily, is not required by the zoning ordinance. However, the applicant is proposing a type-one buffer between the attached and detached products in the development, as well as an enhanced buffer along Bradyville Pike, and he goes into details about that on the, in the pattern book, I should say. Most of the comments at the meeting pertain to traffic and drainage issues, and also preservation of the landscaping and buffering along Bradyville Pike. I did, did not mention, as part of the development, a very large majority of the site is actually being preserved. There's a lot of wetlands. When you start getting to the southern end of the property, that's going to actually be preserved as wetlands. There'll be no development of, of any of that. As far as the drainage-related complaints, like I said, there were several made during the public hearing, and the planning commission also had some questions regarding that during the hearing. Our engineering staff said the drainage concept that they have does appear workable. Of course, the details would have to be worked out at the preliminary plan and construction drawing stage, should this application be approved. After discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval by the application by a unanimous vote, six in favor and none against. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commissioners. Speaker, Paul Townphillips.
I'm not sure that it's appropriate, but at this time, I've also had some discussion with some commissioners here tonight as it relates to turning lanes, and I would like to amend the recommendation from the Planning Commission and require turning lanes as a condition to develop.
Well, that's comments. We'll wait till we open the public hearing, and we'll come back in, and then we'll, we'll look for a motion. Any other, any other questions for Mr. Demasi? Yes, Commissioner Rather.
There was a traffic study done?
Yes, sir.
Did it mention turning lanes or widening or whatever?
It didn't mention any recommendation for turn lanes, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Demasi? Seeing none, then I would call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. The public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against the issue, please come forward, state your name, address, and if you're for or against the proposed request.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Matt Taylor from SEC. We're located at 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard here in Murfreesboro. I will be happy to answer any questions specifically about the drainage or the traffic, either one. Doug did a good job summarizing the project. I would like a little clarification if the amendment does go forward on what kind of turn lanes. I think at most, the right turn lanes would be what we would propose there. That is where the traffic is coming, is from the town side, so... So, but again, the traffic volume coming from, away from town toward the project is so minuscule, you're talking a car every 30 minutes during some of those peak hour times. So it's very, very few cars projected here. And I will be available for questions now or after the hearing.
Thank you, sir.
Can we ask questions?
Are there others that would like to speak for or against this issue? Please come forward.
Hello. Please identify yourself for the record. I'm RJ Atnip. I live at 4137 Bradyville Pike, across the road, across the road from where they're going to build it. I don't know if you're aware of the water problems there. It's, every time it rains three to four inches, it floods that whole area. Where they're talking about putting the townhouses, it stands knee-deep, waist-deep in water. If it rains three to four inches, and the people right, right to the east of where they're doing it, they already, when it rains, it gets up, it blocks their driveway, it gets up their yard, becomes a lake, it gets almost to their house. And they said at the other meeting that they was going to put a cover across Bradyville Pike, but when they do, it runs right straight to the, to the east. They're going to flood these people more. And then you take to the south of them, back where the wetlands is, they're going to flood everybody back there. There's no way you can control that water. They'll control, they'll destroy several homes if they put this subdivision in there. This is not a fit place. This is a swamp that they're talking about building in. It's very low land. It's, I've lived there 11 years, and I've seen this water. And like I say, where they're talking about building the townhouses, three to four inches, it's a pond. It's not even any dry land. It is not fit for a subdivision. And I wish I would all go look at this after the rain and see, because even the back of it, the east side of it, where they're talking about building houses, those houses will flood also. Because when it rains four, four inches, all that back there, I have walked that after a big rain, had to put on my wading boots to walk it, and it's, I mean, it's a swamp. It's not fit for building. And I just wanted you to let y'all all know that this is not fit for a subdivision. It's a swamp area, and it will flood out people, all in the area around it. Thank you very much, free time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else to come speak for or against?
Mayor, Commissioner Joe Swanson Jr., 3614 Manchester Pike. My family's been in Murfreesboro for a minute, and we've done several developments. Don't know how many lots we've developed over the years, both residential, commercial, and industrial. Tonight, I have with me my son, who's a general contractor. He'll be one of the builders in this subdivision. My son-in-law is also a general contractor. He'll be the builder here. My daughter Tiffany will be one of the realtors, and my daughter-in-law, Joe Swanson III's wife, will be another realtor in this subdivision. Let me speak a little bit about the wetlands. I have met with TDEC and TDEC and the Corps of Engineers out there on several occasions. We have a plan together. In fact, right now, there are monitoring wells in the ground. We take readings from those once a month. And so we're building our database to ensure that this wetland will be preserved the right, the correct way. Also, and I'd have to refer to my civil engineer, Matt Taylor, as to how much fall we have. But we have spoken with TDOT and Greg Brooks, and TDOT has, is favorable in participating with us on relieving some of the flooding that's going on out there, capturing that water off our property, running it onto our property through a system of drainage ditches into the detention pond that will eventually go through our property that touches Lidle Creek. So we feel very confident that we can manage the water that is out there. Mr. Keig, which is the neighbor to the east, we, I had a personal meeting with him. I know that Matt Taylor has gone to see at least two or three other neighbors that were out there at the planning, and came to the Planning Commission meeting that expressed concerns. He met with them in the infield, and we're going to do what we can to improve their situation through our development. I'll be available for any questions, if you have any. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Are there others to come and speak for or against this request? Seeing none, coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed, and the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion?
I would like.
Commissioner Phillips.
Offer that amendment now, that a right-hand turning lane be installed.
Or first, I need a motion. I need a motion so you can add the amendment to it.
Motion is to amend the recommendation from the Planning Commission.
Gotcha.
Is that appropriate?
That is proper. Yes, sir. Have a motion in a second. Mr. Shrinow on the second, also. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
Before we have that motion, I'd kind of like to suspend the rules and allow our county engineer to address the gentleman's concerns about water, simply because the Planning Commission has, has listened to those recommendations. And I'd like to, for him to address the concerns that the gentleman just brought up as to what we will do as a county, be able to do to help the drainage area in that.
Yes, sir.
So I'd.
Thank you. Without objection, we'll go into recess to hear from our county engineer. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Mike Hughes, Rutherford County Engineering Department. We have worked diligently with the development team on this project. They have done an extensive study of water coming onto the site, water that will move through the site and also leave the site to the south. So we feel that they've really gone above and beyond the normal rezoning stage. They've, they've looked at this extensively. I've got a long evaluation summary I could read you, but I won't bore you with that. But we feel confident that they, with the improvements that they're proposing, that will not impact the neighbors, but will actually help the surrounding neighbors. When I first started, I met with Mr. Keig. He purchased the property at an auction, built his house, didn't realize that a lot of the property had standing water on it after a heavy rain. His septic system is actually in a little bowl that, that once it rains, it fills up with water and stands for days. So the development team has took our recommendations to heart. They feel that they can make drainage improvements to help Mr. Keig relieve that bowl. They, they were going to have, I think, at least three detention ponds, excuse me, and will also preserve the wetlands in the, in the south area, which will help with water management. So, like I said, typically, we don't see this level of review until we get the construction plans. It's not typically done at this level. But we knew this was a challenging piece of property, and we asked them to look at this on the front end. They've done, done that, and we feel confident that they can make this, this development work.
Mike, have you actually been out to this property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At any time, was there a 30-minute stretch where there was only one car coming through there? Because I know a lot of people would love to live in a place like that.
I can't, I can't agree with that. I believe there are more cars on the road than that.
Well, I travel that road quite a bit myself, and that sounds like a little bit of baloney added to it, so thank you.
Right. It was, it was still early in the morning. There was a lot of people heading to work, so, you know, it might have been, certain times of the day, I'm sure it's higher in the mornings and in the afternoons when people were coming home from work. But, no, I believe there are more cars on that road.
Well, I heard 5:04 a while ago, so I want to make sure my hearing's correct. But if I'm not mistaken, Matt said that this was during later traffic times, there were only 30, 30-minute intervals where there was only one car coming through. I think most of us probably heard that.
I didn't actually do a count, but there were more cars on the road than, than just one.
Any other questions, Commissioner Key?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mike, what I'm understanding, and I can understand this gentleman's concern, if I lived there and I saw standing water, moving water, three inches, four inches, I'd be very concerned. That would speak my mind in front of this meeting. But what I'm hearing from you is that, from the work that's been done, from, from your standpoint.
Yes, sir.
This can even be improved and alleviated with some reparations that you see?
Yes, sir. What, what the gentleman was talking about, he lives on the north side of Bradyville Pike. So on heavy rain events, water will stand in that area. Bradyville Pike forms kind of a dam, and it actually spills over and blocks the road and has to be closed sometimes. So what the development team has proposed to do is to work with TDOT, because Bradyville Pike is a state route, and put some additional drainage structures under the road to allow that water from the north side to travel to the south side to this development, and then through the development to stormwater management areas. So.
Other questions, Commissioner Buchanan.
Has this property been deemed in the floodplain, or?
It is. A lot of the wetlands is in the floodplain. The FEMA is actually studying, re-studying several areas, and this is one of them. And they actually, which I don't, I don't know if we've ever seen the final maps. It seems like it's been on hold forever. But they are reducing the floodplain in some areas. But most of the development will be farther to the north along Bradyville Pike, and is not in the floodplain. Any area that is in a FEMA flood zone or localized drainage area will pay special attention to and make sure they're elevated to protect the houses from drainage. And we, we look carefully at the neighboring properties. I can't stress that enough. We don't want to make it worse. We want to make it better than we found it, if we can. Yes, ma'am.
Other questions for Mr. Hughes? Commissioner Pearson.
The land in question, isn't it basically flat?
It is very flat. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is it not also, like, part of it is a swampy land?
Yes, sir. And they're going to preserve that and create a wetland bank for that. It'll stay, it'll stay wet, wetlands forever.
The study that you referred to a while ago, that they had done extensive search on how to drain the water and all, how long a period of time have they spent on that?
I, I don't know the exact time, but they, I could read you the, the report. But they.
Well, what I'm trying to get to, is it been like the last two months, or has it been like the last six to eight months, like in winter weather, when there's a lot of water, versus what we've had here lately?
Oh, yes. I'd have to get the development team on that. I don't know the length of their, their study, their review. But I've been on the property. I've been on the wetlands. I've walked it, you know, several times. But it's, it is a very, very challenging piece of property. It's, the wetlands area is about as flat as this, this, top of this lectern here. So it is extremely flat. So.
I have one other question. If we approve this based on recommendations, and it floods the neighbors across the street, who's liable for the neighbors across the street?
We'll.
The developer or the county?
I would have to confer to the legal team on that, but we're going to do everything we can to prevent that water from the north side being trapped and allow it to go through this development. So that's, that's probably, part of the problem is that it can't go from the north side to the south side like it's wanting to go. They're going to add some extra drainage structures, some drainage pipes to allow that water to pass through. But, you know, we, I don't know about the legality and liability of that.
Commissioner McAdoo, and then Commissioner P.
I would like our county attorney to answer Commissioner Pearson's question, because that was going to be one of mine, who will be responsible if all these planning doesn't, if all this planning that you say is going to work, don't work. Who's going to be responsible for, if the houses flood? Will it be the county or the developer? And I would like our county attorney.
Mr. Kirsten.
Happy to, happy to answer that. So as a general matter, under state law, decisions like this one that's presently before the board are very discretionary in nature and are really part of planning decisions. And so in that regard, decisions that you make here on applications like these are generally entitled to immunity. So the long, short of it is, it's going to be the developer, the engineers, anybody else who had a hand that was a private party in this development that would be on the hook, and I would defend it on immunity grounds for the county.
Commissioner P.
And this, this may need to go back to the other engineers, but I'll ask Mike, you know, you said you're doing studies, and they mentioned that they're doing a study. And one thing I learned when I was on planning is, a lot of these studies are local. And, you know, we, we changed our rules on that if you had 100 acres, then you would have to go further out. What I want to know is how far downstream have y'all looked to see how this water you're talking about moving will affect people downstream, and how far downstream have y'all looked?
Right. Our rule is typically to, the next two downstream structures that they evaluate. So if there's any crossings that this water will encounter, we ask them to impact, evaluate any impacts on those structures.
Well, in this case, how close are they? I mean, I'm, I'm thinking half a mile to a mile.
Yes, sir.
Away is what we should be looking at, if not further, you know, till it, if it was me, it'd be till it gets into the Stones River. So how far are we from that?
I would have to review that, but you're looking close to probably half a mile down. Because it's mostly through the, the marshy wetland area until you get, I think, just the Manchester Highway.
So I forgot the exact acreage, but does it meet the criteria where they have to trace it all the way back to the Stones River? Or do we have that in place?
I don't, I don't recall that in our regulations.
Okay. I'm seeing Doug nodding no. I would recommend that y'all start looking at that, you know, planning commissioners here.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, Mr. Hughes? Seeing none, we'll come back out of recess. We're back into session. Back to Chairman Pro Tem Phillips. I consulted with attorney during the interim, and, and he said it's improper to amend a motion that comes from the Planning Commission. A proper motion would be to approve the application on the condition of a right turn lane is installed. Would you agree with that motion? Commissioner Shrinow.
Yes, sir. You are based on the, I hear from the staff, you know, plannings, and also the suggestion from Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner P. And also, you know, I also discussed with Swanson prior to the plannings. So I feel like they will do all they can, you know, to support this decision. I would like to seek for approval based on the staff comment on the other person, like Commissioner Philip, you know, suggestion.
So Chairman Pro Tem, would you withdraw your motion? And then we'll recognize a motion from, from Commissioner Shrinow. Okay. Commissioner Phillips withdraws. Back to the motion from Commissioner Shrinow. Everybody understand the motion? So we have a motion. I need a second on his motion.
Second.
We got a second. Craig Harris on the second. Okay, everybody understands the motion as seconded. Any further discussion? Commissioner Rather.
I have one brief comment. I will be abstaining from this vote because that's my prior employer and my marriage relative. But the years I worked there, very challenging at times, and I'm sure he was challenged by me as well. But I'd never, on the residential developments, it always seemed they went above and beyond, and they have developed hundreds and hundreds of lots. above and beyond and they have developed hundreds and hundreds of lots over this county or in the city actually, because I hadn't had a warranty on all of them and had to negotiate contracts on some of them. So I know they're somewhat perfectionist, although they're not perfect, but they're somewhat perfectionist, they want to do it right, do it the right way and have that reputation. That's why they've been in business for decades and decades. You don't last that long if you do things that are kind of shady and whatever. So I just want to make that comment as a former employee and I was around it every single day, one or two o'clock in the morning sometimes, but I will have to abstain from the vote. Thank you.
All right. Another, other comments. Commissioner, Chairman P.
Well, I'm not going to abstain from voting to, in case anybody's wondering, but I do want to reiterate what the commissioner next to me just said. I think Joe Swanson Jr. is a fine person and developer. I know him and his family. I ask pointed questions. That's my job. And if it seems like I'm going after somebody sometimes, I apologize for that, but I feel like it's our job to ask these questions and get to the bottom of it. So that's, that's why my question. Thank you.
Other comments? I'm Kirk. You're good with the motion? Everybody understands the motion? We have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Demossi. At this point in time, members.
Mr. Chairman, could I just make one particular comment?
You sure can.
As Mr. Demossi is leaving, I'd just like to kind of echo, as chairman of the planning commission, we're receiving more and more requests from developers that we know very little about. And Swanson has been in our community for a long time and the comments that I've heard is that this is his town, just like it is mine, and he wouldn't put anything in here that he wouldn't want to live in. And I trust that statement from Joe Swanson and I don't have to have, and I rarely get that type of a, of a statement, or we do, from developers from outside the community. So it's kind of a pleasure to be able to work with local developers and, and that have not only an interest in, in developing a piece of property, but what is in the long-term best interest of our citizens of the property and to do it the correct way.
Like it Chairman Pro Tim Phillips well said. Members, it's not on the agenda, but I had Chairman Pro Tim Phillips had asked me to get LaShan Dixon Matthews and Dr. McDonald to come forward under the COVID-19 conditions to give us a briefing. And so without objection, we'll go into recess and let them come forward and give us a briefing on where our county stands at this point with COVID. And people will be able to hear directly from our health department and, and our director and Dr. McDonald. I do apologize. I told you, and we're still on the first page of the agenda.
Sure.
So, and that's where I told you to be. I just didn't know it was going to take this long. So if you would, please brief our community.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Katrin, Board of Commissioners and guests, good evening. Tonight I have been asked to provide a few updates regarding COVID-19 along with Dr. Lori McDonald. We all can agree that COVID-19 has changed the way in which we go about our everyday lives and that we are definitely living in a new normal. And yes, a lot has transpired over the course of 517 days. Yes, 517 days. Friday, March the 13th, it was definitely a Friday, the 13th. But I can assure you that our staff at the Rutherford County Health Department continues to work hard to ensure that we test, vaccinate, provide education and guidance to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19 here in our county. Over the past few weeks, our county has seen noticeable increases in the numbers of individuals testing positive for COVID-19, more specifically the Delta variant. In response, the Center for Disease Control has issued new guidance to help slow the spread of this virus. In keeping with these recommendations, I want to remind all of us and especially those at home that are watching, the three W's. Wear a mask, watch your distance, wash your hands, and also the three Cs that I've just learned about, avoiding crowds, close contacts and confined spaces. Furthermore, if you have time, I do encourage you to take a look at what we refer to as the Swiss cheese model of the pandemic defense, which was published by the New York Times. This metaphor of Swiss cheese is an easy to grasp concept. Multiple layers of protection, imagine as sliced cheese, block the spread of this virus as called COVID-19. No one layer is perfect. Each has its holes and when the holes align, the risk of infections increase. But several layers combined together, social distancing plus masks, plus hand washing, plus testing and tracing, ventilation and messaging significantly reduce the overall risk. And of course vaccinations will add one more protection of layer. While we recognize that this vaccination, vaccinations is definitely a personal choice, it has been proven that is the most effective way to combat this virus. As public health officials, we continue to strongly encourage everyone to be vaccinated and will continue to provide vaccinations if you receive, if you choose to receive one. Speaking of vaccinations, as of Monday, June the 28th, we have successfully moved both our COVID-19 testing and vaccinations back to the Rutherford County Health Department located here in Murfreesboro at 100 West Burton Street. Our COVID-19 vaccinations have been taking place in our conference room, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 4:00. Today we vaccinated approximately 19 individuals, which is increasing from our previous weeks. Our vaccinations by patient count, based on the reported doses to the state system, which is called TENIS, and additionally our 2019 county population data as of yesterday, we have administered 2,000, 2,000, a total, total number of single vaccinations reported. So I'm sorry, 257,282 total number of single vaccinations. So there was whether it was Pfizer or Moderna, two doses or a single dose of Johnson and Johnson. So our number of percentage is 44% of eligible residents aged of 12 years of older have been fully vaccinated in Rutherford County. Again, 44%, so it's increasing, which compared to the United States of 58%. I think most of us have heard about the threshold to gain immunity and it's about 60 to 70%. So we are getting there slowly but surely. So testing, as we have expanded our testing and drive up testing, we will continue to take place in our rear parking lot at our Rutherford County Health Department, by appointment only Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 10:30. To schedule an appointment, we ask that individuals call our health department at 898-7880. Additionally, self-test kits can be picked up Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:00 for those individuals 18 and age of older. Today we tested roughly 66 individuals with our PCR test and gave out roughly 25 available self-test kits. Along with testing, we continue to work all investigation that goes along with public health of positive cases seven days a week. This is something that we will continue to do even throughout this pandemic. Over the last seven days, our average of positive percentage was 18 to roughly 20%. That number has increased. In June, when I was here to report to you all, that number was 1%. We are now 18 to 20%. Also in ongoing efforts to maximize outreach and access, the Rutherford County Health Department will continue to work with members of churches, community groups, community events, facilities and businesses to bring COVID-19 vaccinations and testing to off-site locations as needed. Working together, we hope that we can provide COVID-19 vaccinations and testing to those who need it the most. Furthermore, we have also been able to share a lot of great information on social media and also with our community partners, thanks to our amazing PIO, Ashley McDonald, as well as our amazing community partners. So at this time, I do want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Dukes with Murfreesboro City Schools, Middle Tennessee State University, Murfreesboro City Schools and Rutherford County School Nurses for their commitment to health and the safety of our students. We do have an open line of communication with our schools and each one is dedicated to ensuring that we have the same goal, which is to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 here in our county. Unfortunately, over the past 14 days, Rutherford County has averaged 134 new cases per day. For the 14 days prior, the average was 63, which is where we were the first half of February, which is over three times the state acceptable rate. Our current cases are roughly 1,249 cases in the county, which is where we were in late January. The CDC does estimate that these cases in our country and around the country to be at least 80% of the Delta variant. The vaccine does seem to almost be completely effective for preventing serious illnesses or death, but less, much less effective from actually carrying the virus and getting it. As we continue to monitor COVID-19 in our community, we will remain diligent in the critical COVID-19 indicators as a state and county to identify problem areas and also to provide education and early indication of substantial increases in our community transmission. These metrics that we will continue to look at are trends in cases, trends in symptoms, testing capabilities, in addition to our healthcare system. Before I turn the floor over to Dr. Lori McDonald, I do want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you all for your continued support of us at the Rutherford County Health Department and beyond. And additionally, thank you to Mayor Katrin for his continued support and also answering every single phone call that I make to him and email as we go through this pandemic.
Dr. McDonald.
There's so much you could talk about with this virus, but I just want to hit a few of the things that you're hearing a lot about. I keep track of a lot of the deaths as your medical examiner for the, she's taller than me. I keep track of the deaths and we were having a lot of deaths that were COVID-19, COVID-19 pneumonias, and those all kind of went down and now they're starting to go back up again. So that's for me, always obviously quite alarming. Talked a little bit about the Delta variant and you need to understand that viruses live to change the way they approach us so that they can do what they want to do, which is infect us. So people are saying to, coming to me all the time and saying I had this vaccine, this vaccine, the Johnson and Johnson, am I protected? And the answer is yes. Now, you know, people do antibody tests and if their levels are low, does that mean that their antibody response is not going to be brisk? Not true. There's memory cells that we have and it's very sophisticated. I'm not an immunologist, but it's a very sophisticated system. The memory cells wake up and they say, hey dudes, you got to start making more antibodies when they're confronted with the actual disease. This is why it's so important that we get vaccinated. Now the, both Pfizer and Moderna and the Johnson and Johnson are all active against the Delta variant and that's the one that's getting people. So I, obviously doing what I do for a living, really would like people to get vaccinated if they possibly could. I want to talk a little bit about boosters. You've heard a lot about is there going to be boosters? And the person that I have since the eighties have just hung on to every word, of course, is Anthony Fauci. Boosters right now are not recommended. Over a million people in this country have had a third shot that wasn't probably received in a way that was suggested, but they felt that the more the better. That's not always the case. People who are on biologic drugs, such as those folks who have rheumatoid arthritis and Crohn's disease and so on, they, we have looked at some of their antibody responses and they, they don't seem to generate any antibodies. So that's the group that are at most risk. They were the first ones coming to State Farm to get vaccinated because they know their immune system is low. So this, we now know from testing that sometimes it's non-existent. That's the group that they're really trying to get at. It's a very small percent of the population, but it's a very important part. And they do not want to get this disease because it will not, they will not do well. So I think the most important thing is to do the things that LaShan just told you to do, distancing, washing your hands. I'm a big advocate of masks. I've been an HIV provider for seven years. I've done the tuberculosis program for 15 years and I haven't gotten either of those diseases because I always wear a mask. So I think it's very important to consider that. If you're fully vaccinated, obviously you're at less risk, but we're seeing, I'm seeing upticks in younger people right now and that scares me. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any.
Commissioner Phillips?
In the past, we've, we've asked people to refrain from gatherings like family reunions or high school reunions or church picnics or those types of things. And in addition to that, we've asked employers who service the public, who meet the public, such as some of our county officers, do you have a suggestion or maybe even a comment as to what those employers should do and those people who are planning large gatherings, what they should do? Do you have a recommendation?
My first recommendation would be to get vaccinated because that's, that's the first line. I have been asked by, not really companies, but I suppose they're companies in the area to come and speak or just to be, to kind of mingle out on the floor if anybody has any questions because of the vaccine hesitancy that has happened in some groups of people. And you know, I, I respect people's wishes and if they have questions, I'm happy to answer them. So that's one of the outreach we're trying to start to do because I think there's a lot of misconceptions that can be easily done away with if, if they ask the question and they get an answer that's reasonable. That's one thing. In terms of large gatherings, I know every, every, every institution and some of the churches have different rules. I know my church, the pastor knows the vaccination rate and he goes by how many people can be in the congregation based on the science. I think that's what we have to do. I think we have to be vigilant. I think what we saw was our numbers drop and everybody was like, we're out of this. And then the variant said, yeah, I'm going to just change my code a little bit and we're not going to be out of it. And that's what they, they live to live, these, these viruses. That's their purpose in life, just like ours. So we just have to watch, watch what we do, be reasonable and try, try to follow the best guidance of the CDC and Dr. Fauci.
Commissioner Kershaw.
Ladies, let me ask you a question. Does the county website or does the health department website have a Q and A or a list of bullet points for those people that are shot hesitant like you suggested? I know we could talk about that for three hours and I don't want to, but for those who are hesitant and have heard a million things on social media, are there facts on the websites that people can turn to?
Yes, there are facts on the website as well as we've been working with Ashley McDonald, our PIO, to put information out on social media to deplete some of those myths and things that are out there and we will continue to do that and we'll be happy to provide that link for you all so that you have it at your disposal as well.
So the takeaway from this, Dr. McDonald and LaShan, is please everyone in the community try to get vaccinated.
Be Rutherford responsible.
Be Rutherford responsible, be an adult, do what has to be done. We got through this one time. I tell the members I did reach out to State Farm again in the event because we knew that this surge may be coming with schools starting back, empty tissues coming back. Probably see a surge with, with people coming back and just co-mingling in large groups like schools and empty tissue. So I reached out to State Farm. They have given us the green light. If you all reach capacity at the health department, they will allow us to come back on the premises and use that same facility again if, if we get to that point. So you just let us know and we'll be prepared to take care of our, our citizens. Okay? Thank you so much for coming tonight. Members, next, this is the last item on the first page is item H, public comments. We have Mr. Carl Burning going to talk about the landfill representing Rutherford Neighborhood Mr. Burning, I'll limit your comments to three minutes and you're recognized. Yes, sir.
Eight, 7:49.
We got a buzzer. The floor doesn't, there's no trap door on the floor, but you're good. Go ahead.
I wish I had something to make y'all pay attention. It's hard to, all we. It's hard to take all we heard tonight. It's all been interesting. I'm Carl Burning. I live on Herschel Hudson Road in Last Casses. I'm a member of the Rutherford County Neighborhood Alliance. For the last several meetings of the RNA, we've had discussions about water quality at Walter Hill. New for y'all, right? The recent event at Walter Hill wherein the young 16-year-old was terribly stricken while swimming at Walter Hill, Walter Hill Park remains foremost in our minds. We have deep concerns for him and his family. For several years, we've heard reports of hazardous substances being found via water testing at Walter Hill. Seemingly, nothing ever comes from these reports. I believe I do recall that BFI Republic claims that they have a property-lined landfill and that the old county landfill is not property-lined, so they claim that all hazardous materials enter the water via the county landfill. We've been providing to them a defense for years and that defense is that we see, the only way we can get out of this conundrum is to clean up our old landfill. I guess the term for that is reclaiming the landfill. It's not an easy job nor is it cheap. I understand the cost will be in excess of $13 million. BFI and Republic at every opportunity espouses how much money they pay our county at the rate of $1.20 per ton for all refuse brought from outside the county. With the efficient assistance from the office of Ms. Lisa Nolan, I was able to retrieve the payment records of BFI Republic to Rutherford County. It is my understanding that this money is received monthly and is deposited in the general fund. A brief overview of that is that for the years 2001 through 2010, we've received an average of $1,377,710.14 per year. That's for 10 years. From 2011 until 2021, we received an average of $833,574.84 per year. These numbers indicated over the last year, we've received over $200,000 less than the previous years. I don't know why. If any of my statements are calculated or incorrect, I would be glad to correct them. It is my request that this body earmark all future monies received from Republic LLC to go into a fund to reclaim the Rutherford County unlined landfill. This action will take away all excuses and any doubt about where the hazardous materials are entering the Stones River. We should do our part to protect our drinking water and our citizens. And I kind of like the part where Republic pays for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burning. Thank you for those comments. Members, next we have, we move to item I, election confirmations. Hold on, Chairman Reed, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We begin with item one, listing of notaries can be found on your iPads. Commissioners? Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Have a motion, is there a second? Have a second, Commissioner Buchanan, or Commissioner Makado, who? Buchanan, thank you. Okay, without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Item two, steering would like to announce three vacancies for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Item three, steering would like to announce two vacancies for the Veer Board. Item four, steering wishes to announce two vacancies for Codes Enforcement Adjustments and Appeals Board. Mr. Chairman, and item five, steering would like to confirm the appointment of Judicial Commissioner Kristi Wells. I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Shireno. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Item six, Mr. Chairman, steering wishes to confirm the appointment for Judicial Commissioner Rhonda Campbell. I so move.
Have a motion, is there a second? Have a second, Commissioner Gammon. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to announce at this time the item seven, involve the appointment of General Sessions Judge, Part One. Item eight, tentatively elect our chairman pro tem. Item nine, announce the election of Commission Chaplin at September commission meeting. Item 10, tentatively elect our commission chairman. And item 11, the election of Steering Committee. Mr. Chairman, I now yield to the chair to conduct these items of business.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Thank you so much. Our members, we will move into item number seven, appointment of General Sessions Judge, Part One. We have two candidates here tonight. We have Ben Hall, Trey McFarland II and Trevor Hughes Lynch. So at this point in time, I'd like to call on, give the opportunity to both of the candidates If you would please come forward, we'll call on Ben Hall, Trey McFarland III, if you'd like to come forward and address this body. Mr. McFarland, you are recognized.
Thank you for allowing Mr. Lynch and I to have the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Trey McFarland. I'm Ben Hall McFarland III. I was born and raised in Murphysboro. I went to Oakland High School. I've lived out near Last Casses for almost 19 years. I'm married to Sarah Beth McFarland. We have a son, Maverick Hall McFarland. He is almost two. I've been a lawyer here for almost 20 years. It will be 20 years this October. I have a general litigation practice. In preparing for this, a lot of people said, "Okay, well, what's that mean?" I'm a trial attorney. I try cases. People come to my office, I try criminal cases, I try civil cases, I represent the people of our community. I work hard, I fight hard, I win some, I lose some. I've handled criminal cases, I've handled simple criminal cases from DUIs, public intox, simple possessions. I've handled serious criminal cases from murders to kidnappings, serious drug offenses, aggravated assaults. I've handled all those at the session level as well as the circuit level. I've also handled General Sessions cases in surrounding counties, Williamson County, Wilson, Putnam, Coffey, Cannon. Again, I've been practicing for 20 years, so I'm familiar with this General Sessions Court as well as other ones. In addition to my criminal cases, I also have a civil practice. I've represented people of our community in, I don't want to say simple cases, but in more simple cases, I've represented them in domestic proceedings, child custody, child support, juvenile dependent neglect, probate trials, boundary disputes. I don't know if there's a list and I've represented a lot, all of the civil list, but I've represented a lot. I've also handled complex litigation, medical malpractice, personal injury, toxic tort, nursing home fraud. I currently have a case in federal court versus BP Oil. I don't know if you're familiar with the Deepwater Horizon oil spill. I have a case that's set right now, it's set for trial in March, don't know if it will go or not. So I've also practiced in federal court. I also represent pro athletes, I've negotiated seven-figure contracts, I've represented athletes in high-profile divorces in Davidson County, seven-figure, and one of them was an eight-figure asset divorce. In other words, I have covered the waterfront. I've tried lots of cases. How does that help me possibly be a judge? I would suggest in three ways. I've tried cases all over the state of Tennessee, I've tried them in Memphis, I've tried them in Knoxville, I've tried them in Nashville, I've tried them in Knoxville, in Memphis, Chattanooga, sorry. I've been in front of all of our courts in the state. I am very well-versed in all the rules, criminal and civil, whether it's procedure, whether it's evidence. Again, through my experience as a trial attorney, there's not a lot I don't think that I have not seen. Does that mean I remember them? Probably every time, no. But I've seen them and I've been versed in them. Through this process, I've been asked by a lot of you, by other people, you know, how can your trial practice help you be a better judge? Good case. I would submit to you Commissioners that I've had the ability to see cases from all sides. I've been a plaintiff in a case, I've brought cases, I've sued people, I've carried the burden. I've defended people in civil cases, I've defended them in criminal cases. I think that will allow me to bring to the bench, from seeing both sides of it, a fair and impartial demeanor and ability to see everything and treat everybody fairly. Another question I've been asked frequently, well, how does that play into the roles of General Sessions Court? Well, I would submit that it also allows me to see those roles and identify them. Although it will be a criminal position initially, there are three distinct roles I would submit. There's a prosecutor in criminal court, as you know, and he prosecutes and tries to put people in jail. There's defense attorneys that are in criminal court, they have a certain role, and there's a judge. And obviously, a judge's role, everybody's probably fairly familiar with, they're like a referee or an umpire. They have to know the laws of procedure, they have to know what has to be done and they have to be fair and impartial. I would submit that all three roles are very distinct and they're very different. And I have the unique perspective of seeing all of them. I also, excuse me, I've also had the opportunity, more so as a young lawyer, but I've also had the opportunity to sit as a special judge. I've sat as General Sessions Judge for Judge Lowery when he was on the bench, for Judge McFarland when he's not been around. There was a question before the Steering Committee, have I had an opportunity to sit as General Sessions Civil Judge? I have not for Judge Gilli. He's got Ms. Bell there, she does a fine job when he's not there. Although I have sat as Civil Judge and in the event that would be called of me, in the event I did receive this appointment, I would be able to. I've also been asked, you know, what else? Okay, so you're a trial attorney. What else can you bring to the bench? You know, how can you be a better judge? I was then immediately asked, well, you think you could be a better judge because you've had big wins? I said, "I don't know. What's, what's a big win? Is that a, as a lawyer, is that a monetary win? Is it compensatory? Is it punitive? Is it a win from having a case where the facts, I just didn't have good facts? Unfortunately, as a lawyer, you don't always get to pick your facts. I sometimes have good clients and sometimes have bad clients and you have to deal with the facts. Is a big win a case where I had a criminal case and he was charged with murder and they end up getting a manslaughter? Is it a, is it a, I don't know. But I would submit to you, as I was thinking about this, one thing came to mind. I would like to share with you a letter that I received from a client. I will say, I brought 21 copies, but then I started to think, well, if I hand all these out, everybody's going to feel like they're in school and with school getting back in session, they might not appreciate that and with a later hour. So I do have 21 copies, if anyone would like to see it during their question to me, I'd be happy to share it. But it's something I'm very proud of and it's something I feel I can bring to the bench. A little background, this was from a very contested domestic case. It was a very long one. There were very young children involved. It was just a complicated one. I received the email, in my work email, Friday, April 16th, 2021, 3:02 PM. So I received it earlier this year. My assistant's name's Brooke, she's worked with me for 15 years, wonderful assistant and I couldn't, I don't know where I'd be without her. Dear Brooke and Trey, I would just like to thank you for your patience during this nightmare that has been my life. I know there are times you got to deal with my motions whenever worrying got the best of me. I apologize if that ever made your jobs harder than it already is. I cannot be more thankful for the work you have done, the patience you have shown me, but also for the support you have given me during this time. Never once have you felt like someone I had to hire to do a job, but you felt like friends that were here to help me, to get me into the light, into the end of a really dark tunnel. Thank you for your honesty when I was being irrational and for understanding all the worries I had for me and my children. I feel certain at some point we will work together and I hope that you will have me. You really have been great. This has been long and hard and I'm so glad it's over. Thank you for everything." And then I marked out her name, but it begins with an S. So again, back to my initial question, I don't know what the answer is exactly, but what came to my mind, in addition to being able to see both sides, you know, in a civil case and a criminal case, what came to my mind that I'm proud that I help people. People come to me and I try to help them, I try to fight for them. Again, I don't always win, but when they come to me, they know they're going to get an honest opinion and they know I'm going to fight for them. That is something I feel I can bring to the bench. And also discussing and thinking about, well, Trey, what else can you bring to the bench? I've also been blessed with the opportunity, I've done a little bit of volunteering, Vanderbilt Children's Hospital, Make-A-Wish, Special Kids here in town. So I've been able to see, unfortunately, that bad things happen to good people and we can't always control those things. It reminded me of a conversation I had with an older lawyer. I've probably only been practicing law for a couple of years. I've been appointed to a fairly difficult case and I was talking to him and I said, "Man, it sure is hard starting a law practice, taking out loans, a lot of overhead, it's hard to start a business, as you know. Lots of school debt, it's just hard." And so I was, I was basically complaining to this lawyer, saying, "Man, this is hard." He looked at me and said, "Well, it's hard because you have it all wrong. You're not looking at it right, boy." And I said, "Okay." He goes, "You're blessed and that's what you need to do and that's how you need to see it." A little perplexed, he goes, "You're blessed that you have the ability to help people. You're blessed that you can listen and you actually have a way to do something." He gave me some advice, that's probably some of the best advice I've ever received in my personal life as well as my legal career. He said, "Put your head down, go try cases, get your nose bloody, get dirty in the trenches, take care of the clients. I promise if you do that, the money will take care of itself." Again, probably some of the best advice I could probably ever have. Again, something I hope, in addition to my experience, but the blessed attitude and the perspective to know that when people need help, possibly as a judge, I have the ability to help them. I believe also, again, through my volunteer work, I believe that I would bring a compassionate heart, the ability to listen. I'm a big advocate for all of our recovery courts. We have wonderful teams, Mental Health Court, DUI Court, Drug Court, Veterans Treatment Court. I believe that is a big part of the General Sessions Court that I would like to continue. Again, as I'm sure you're aware, General Sessions Court, it's, it's where a lot of cases start. It's a lot, a lot of criminal cases start there, a lot of civil cases start there. I believe with that being initially the People's Court, you know, it used to be Justice of the Peace, you know, before they were changed to General Sessions Judge, it's the People's Court. With it being the initial and the start of a lot of these people's problems, I think we have the unique perspective and the ability that right out of the gate, we can help them. I think we have to not only punish them, but also while we're doing that, try to help them. It's also something I hope that I can bring to the bench. I believe my experience uniquely qualifies me to be prepared, conscientious, and possibly bring those traits to the bench. I hope that I can do that. I've worked hard to be in the position where I have from trying cases and helping people. I'm ready, I believe, to try to help people do that from the bench. I know y'all don't have an easy decision tonight. I'm friends with Mr. Lynch, I've known him for a long time. I really don't think y'all can go wrong. He would do a great job too. I thank you for your service and being here tonight and I would appreciate your consideration.
Any questions for Mr. McFarland? Commissioner P.
I plan to, to ask both of you this same question. You mentioned some of the programs that we have out there, the Drug Court, for instance. One program that we helped initiate last year was a pre-trial release program for nonviolent first-time offenders. What's your take on that? Should we continue?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm a big proponent of that, I'm a big believer in that. I don't see, in my humble opinion, when we can provide more oversight, which provides people more help, and we start that as soon as possible, instead of just, you know, making them make a bond, and then they don't have a court date for I don't know how long, and then we have nothing. At least at the beginning, we can try to get them in some help and some counseling, and they're not just, you know, sometimes they sit in a jail, depending on when they're arrested, for a couple of days. I don't know how that helps, and I don't think it's a good cost-effective way for the county either, for them to be sitting there at, I think, what is it, $65 a day? So, I'm a big believer in it.
Other questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much, Mr. McFarland.
Thank you.
Next, we have Trevor H. Lynch. Mr. Lynch, please come forward, and you're recognized.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I am Trevor Lynch, and I want to take this opportunity to thank you all for your consideration for the appointment as General Sessions Judge, Part I. After I appeared before the Steering Committee, some of the feedback I received was, it seemed like we were in a courtroom, and you were addressing a jury. That's fair. There's a reason for that. That's because my experience with public speaking was learned and developed inside a courtroom. Thousands of hours spent inside a courtroom. Many of those spent before the General Sessions Court, for which I'm seeking an appointment. General Sessions Judge, Part I, the Honorable Ben Hall McFarland II presiding. I didn't learn how to tie my shoes, or ride a bike, or how to throw, catch, or hit a ball from the judge. Instead, I learned from him and others like him, how to be a judge, what it takes and what it means to be a judge. And I learned it from being inside the courtroom. For me, that education started in 1999, appearing in the General Sessions Court of Rutherford County. And for over 20 years now, I've continued to appear in many criminal courts, in various jurisdictions and counties. As a result of my position, I have appeared as what's called a prosecutor pro tem, which means if there's a conflict in a particular office, and you have to have an attorney or prosecutor go to a different jurisdiction, to appear in front of a different judge in a different county. When it was Rutherford County's opportunity to assist, I was sent. Is that type of experience important? Yes, it is. And plainly spoken, if you're responsible for ensuring that others are doing something correctly, you yourself have to know and understand what they're doing, why they were doing, doing it, and how it is supposed to be done. Commissioners, experience is not gained through time. It is earned through action and application. The actual application of our criminal laws inside the courtroom, and the ability to apply those laws to the individual facts of the extensive variety of criminal cases we see. This particular judgeship presides over criminal cases. It's been that way since before my time, and it will remain that way after October 1st. And I know this because I've asked. So, what kind of judge does that demand? All judges, regardless of the court, have to have the proper demeanor and temperament to be patient, understanding, and considerate of all those before the court. A judge has to be knowledgeable of the law. This judgeship requires extensive knowledge of our criminal laws, rules of criminal procedure, and rules of evidence. A cornerstone trait of a judge is to be fair and impartial, to have no bias for or prejudice against those before it. Those traits are not inherited, they're learned, and you don't learn those qualities or traits overnight. It takes years of dedication and commitment, practicing law inside a courtroom, studying, learning, and applying those laws, rules of evidence, and rules of criminal procedure to the facts of each individual case. So, why me? Because I have for over 20 years, rather, I have over 20 years of actual, inside-the-courtroom experience. Over 20 years of being ingrained and instilled with and by the ethical responsibility to pursue justice, to pursue the truth. And over 20 years of dedication and commitment to that ethical responsibility. If I could, I'd like to read to you an excerpt from one of our United States Supreme Court opinions. This is Berger versus United States. "The prosecutor acts as the representative not of an ordinary party to a controversy, but of a sovereignty whose obligation to govern impartially is as compelling as its obligation to govern at all, and whose interest, therefore, in a criminal prosecution is not that it shall win a case, but that justice shall be done. As such, he is in a peculiar and very definite sense, a servant of the law, the twofold aim of which is that guilt shall not escape, nor innocence suffer. He may prosecute with earnestness and vigor, indeed, he should do so. But while he may strike hard blows, he is not at liberty to strike foul ones. It is as much his duty to refrain from improper methods calculated to produce a wrongful conviction as it is to use every legitimate means to bring about a just one." Commissioners, those are not just words on a page for me. The transition from a prosecutor to a judge, for me, will be simple and slight, because as a judge, you have to have that same dedication to honor and follow our laws justly and fairly. A private attorney has an obligation, an obligation to their client, to the individual only. Ask any private attorneys you know. I've been told countless times by them, as an attorney, they're not just the attorney, they're the therapist, the cheerleader, the salesman. Between those two responsibilities and obligation, which would be the easiest transition? For me, it will be seamless. I'm prepared for it, I'm dedicated to it, and I'm committed to the responsibility of it. The importance of your decision tonight will impact the citizens of Rutherford County for no less than one year. I know there's talk that the election will be coming soon. No less than one year, this judge will provide or preside over the General Sessions Court, Part I. Will it be one year of on-the-job training, or one year of a seamless transition with the knowledge and security that the rights of the accused and the interests of the public are both being protected? Making a commitment to others. Commissioners, I ask each and every one of you tonight to honor your first commitment when you took office to the citizens of Rutherford County, a commitment to act in their best I agree with Mr. McFarland, and we've known each other a long time, we went to high school together. I agree with Mr. McFarland, you have two qualified candidates before you tonight. Your commitment to Rutherford County, to the men and women that you represent, that elected you to your position, the commitment you made there is not to appoint a qualified candidate, but to point the best qualified candidate. I submit to you, ladies and gentlemen, that I am that candidate. And at this time, I invite you to ask me any questions about my qualifications for this seat, why I would want it, or what my priorities would be. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Lynch? Question P.
Same question I asked Mr. McFarland.
Can you repeat that for him?
About our pretrial release program for nonviolent first-time offenders. What's your thoughts on that? Would you help continue that program?
Without question, I would help continue that program. The pretrial release program is not designed to allow any individual that has a violent offense or creates a risk to our community to be released. It is designed for nonviolent criminal offenders, and it is designed to not just say, well, we're going to put a bond on you and require you to appear in court, but we're going to try and offer services available that could assist you to prevent you from additional criminal offenses. So, yes, Commissioner, I would support it, and do support it.
Other questions for Mr. Lynch? Seeing none. Thank you so much, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you.
You know, Rutherford County is blessed that we have two great candidates that stood before you tonight, and you will make a difference, whatever direction we go, and whoever wins will sit in a seat and work with our citizens. Whoever loses will continue to work for our citizens, and contribute to effect our legal system. I just think we're so blessed to be in this community, to have two great candidates to speak as well as what they do, and have the passion for this position. So, here's how we're going to do this, we're going to, we'll start out, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, it's going to be by voice vote, and so, if everybody's prepared to vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner David Gammon.
McFarland.
Commissioner Piercy.
McFarland.
Commissioner Rather.
A.D.A. Lynch.
Commissioner P.
McFarland.
Commissioner Cook.
McFarland.
Commissioner Buchanan.
McFarland.
Commissioner Kusch.
Lynch.
Commissioner Reed.
McFarland.
Commissioner Gurley.
McFarland.
Commissioner Blair.
McFarland.
Commissioner Allen.
Commissioner Stevens.
Lynch.
Commissioner Johnson.
McFarland.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon.
McFarland.
Commissioner Harris.
Lynch.
Commissioner Dodd.
Lynch.
Commissioner Phillips. Commissioner Key. Commissioner Gooch.
Mr. McFarland.
Commissioner Shirino.
What's your total, Madam Clerk?
McFarland, 12, Lynch, 7.
That's what I got. Congratulations, Mr. McFarland. Mr. Lynch, thank you as well, and thank you for what both of you do. Now, members, let me tell you that we cannot swear in or do the oath of office tonight. Technically, the seat isn't vacant until October 1st. Judge McFarland officially retires. The new appointee will be sworn in after October 1st, 2021. So, congratulations, and for a job well done on both of you, and thank you, it takes a lot of courage to come up and tell all about yourself, and offer yourself, as many of our commissioners do here as well. So, thank you. Next, members, we'll move on to tentative-elect Chairman Pro Tem. We are electing tentatively Chairman Pro Tem. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Commissioner Jeff Phillips.
We have a motion for Commissioner Jeff Phillips as a second, and it was on the second, Carol Cook. Any other nominations? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make a move, we close on that one?
I have a motion to cease nominations, and so, all of those in favor, signify as saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, announce the election of Commissioner Chaplin for the September meeting. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Trey Gooch.
I have a motion to nominate Trey Gooch, and we have a second. Announcement? It's just an announcement. Now, we move into item number 10. Tentative-elect Commission Chairman, Commissioner Phillips, if you would, please come forward as Speaker Pro Tem, and I will relieve the gavel. Item I-10 on our agenda is to tentatively elect Commission Chairman, and the floor is open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Bill Kethren.
We have a motion and a second for Mayor Kethren. Any other nominations?
I make a motion to nominate to cease.
I have a motion for the nominations to cease, and Mayor Kethren be elected as Chairman by acclamation.
Am I recognized?
I need a second on that. I have a second, yes.
I would request a recorded vote, please.
Say again.
I request a recorded vote.
Got it. We've had a motion to cease nominations, and the Mayor Kethren be elected by acclamation, but we'll call the vote. So, there's only one nomination so far, and this will be a roll call vote. So, if we're ready, Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll. Hold on a second. Go on the board. Okay, if that's okay with you, Commissioner Stevens will go on the board. So, the roll call will be electronic. If you're ready, Madam Clerk, at this time, you may cast your vote. Record the vote.
19 yes, 1 no.
Motion to tentatively elect Mayor Kethren as Chairman of the Commission for this coming fiscal year. This coming year has passed, and it will be presented at our September member, September Thank you, Commissioner Phillips, and thank each and every one of you. It's quite an honor to represent you, and I will continue to work for you, and work for the citizens of this community, and make, as I've always said, make Rutherford County, we are going to set the gold standard for all other 94 counties in this state to follow. So, I thank you, and I appreciate you being the leader of this team. Thank you. Next, we have election of our Steering Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Commissioner McAdoo.
We have a motion to elect Commissioner McAdoo. Question P.
I nominate Craig Harris.
I have a motion to nominate Craig Harris.
Michael Rather.
And we have Michael Rather.
Robert Stevens.
Robert Stevens.
Mr. Chairman.
Virgil Gammun.
I nominate Pettis Reed.
Pettis Reed. Mr. Gardner.
Paul Johnson.
Paul Johnson. Are there other nominations? Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Kush.
Mike Kush. Are there others? Are you ready? The clerk is preparing. So, members, go ahead and write your 7 down because this is going to be voice vote. And then, so be prepared when the clerk calls your name, pick your 7.
Please read this.
Madam Clerk, if you could.
Read the nominees.
That's what I was asking her to do, is Madam Clerk, please reread the nominees, and you'll pick 7. Everybody understand? Madam Clerk? Okay.
The nominees are Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Rather.
Slow down.
Oh.
About a three-second pause between each name. There you go.
I'll start at the beginning.
Okay.
Commissioner McAdoo. Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Virgil Gammun. Commissioner Johnson. And Commissioner Kush.
Is everyone ready to vote? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner David Gammun.
McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Reed, Gammun, Johnson, and Kush.
Commissioner Piercy.
McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Stevens, Reed, Johnson, Kush.
Commissioner Rather.
Me, Abie Rather. Reed, Johnson.
I'm sorry, start all over, please.
Rather, Reed, Johnson, Kush, Harris, Stevens. One more time, give me the list. I'm missing one somewhere.
The list that's been nominated has, is Commissioner McAdoo. Commissioner Harris.
Oh, I forgot about McAdoo. McAdoo.
McAdoo, Reed, Johnson, Harris, Kush, Rather, and Stevens.
Commissioner Cook.
McAdoo, Harris, Stevens, Gannon, Reed, Johnson, Rather. Did I just say it twice? Okay. Kush. Did I? No.
It'd been all of them.
I got it. Okay. Got confused. All of them.
Yes, that's all that's been nominated. There's eight that's been nominated. I only need you to vote for seven.
Okay. Okay, let me do it again.
Okay.
McAdoo, Harris, Stevens, Gannon, Reed, Rather, Paul Johnson.
That's seven. Commissioner Buchanan.
McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Stevens, Reed, Johnson, and Kush.
Commissioner Kush.
Harris, McAdoo, Rather, Kush.
Oh.
I'll start over. Harris, McAdoo, Rather, Kush, Reed, Stevens. It should be six.
One more. Commissioner Reed.
McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Reed, Gammun, Kush, Johnson.
Commissioner Gurley.
McAdoo, Harris, Stevens, Gannon, Reed, Johnson, Kush.
Commissioner Blair.
McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Stevens, Reed, Johnson, Kush.
Commissioner Allen isn't present, so Commissioner Stevens.
McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Stevens, Reed, Johnson, Kush.
Commissioner Johnson.
McAdoo, Rather, Reed, Gannon, Harris, Kush, and myself.
Commissioner Virgil Gammun. That's correct. Commissioner Virgil Gammun.
McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Reed, Kush, Johnson. That's six so far, right? And then myself.
Commissioner Harris.
Johnson, Harris.
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Okay.
Here we go. Johnson, Harris, Gannon, McAdoo, Rather, Reed, Kush.
Commissioner Dodd. Commissioner Phillips.
McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Stevens, Reed, Johnson, and Kush.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Harris, Stevens, Reed, Kush, Johnson. I don't know about him. He couldn't think of my name but Rather.
Harris, Rather, Stevens, Gannon, Reed, Johnson, Kush.
Commissioner Gooch.
Mr. McAdoo, Mr. Harris, Mr. Rather, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Reed, Mr. Johnson, and Mr. Kush.
Commissioner Sherrino.
McAdoo, Harris, Stevens, Reed, Johnson, Kush, Rather.
Members, while the clerk is adding that up with her staff, here's how we're going to do this. We used to excuse ourselves in going to 205, but in keeping with transparency, I've consulted with our attorney. We feel it's best that I will ask Chairman Pro Tem to come up, and he will actually, because he will be doing, handling all the committees in September, so I'll ask him to come up and lead the election for Chairman of Steering. And we're going to do it here at the well because TVs are on, and so this is in a move of transparency. It won't take but a second. So as soon as we have the total number of seven for the committee, Chairman Pro Tem, I ask you to come forward, and all the other members will come up as well. Okay.
You want me to read the totals?
Yes, please, ma'am. Read the totals. She's reading the totals, members.
Commissioner McAdoo, 19. Commissioner Harris, 20. Commissioner Rather, 19. Commissioner Stevens, 15. Commissioner Virgil Gammun, 9. Commissioner Reed, 20. Commissioner Johnson, 19. Commissioner Kush, 19.
Okay, so we're going to, the new members are McAdoo, Harris, Rather, Stevens, Reed, Johnson, and Kush. That's our new members. If you would, please come up and to the well. Speaker Pro Tem, if you'll come up and conduct the election of Chairman. On the mic. Congratulations on your election to the Steering Committee for this coming year. The floor is now open for nominations for Chair. We have a second, a first nomination and a second for Chairman Harris. Any other nominations?
As Chairman, I make the motion that nomination cease.
We have a motion for acclamation. All those in favor of the, to elect Chairman Harris to re, to be the new Chairman of the Steering Committee, please say aye. And the motion carries. Chairman Harris, your committee. Thank you, gentlemen. The floor is open for Vice Chair.
I nominate Pettis Reed.
I have a Pettis Reed. I have a second. Anyone else? Have a motion to cease? Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of Commissioner Reed to be Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Congratulations, sir.
Gentlemen, before you leave, can you please fill this out and let me know of your committees that you're requesting? Yes.
Is this the night they set, the day they meet, and the time they meet also, like the other committees, or not?
They can either wait to September, but if they want to do it tonight, that'd be fine. That's fine.
I'll be glad to do it tonight. We do announce it in our August. We will be meeting the first Monday of every month at 5:30.
First Monday of every month. Okay. Has everybody got that down?
Mr. Chairman, we are meeting August 31st this month.
August 31st.
We will not be, because the first Monday falls on Labor Day. So we will be meeting August 31st.
August 31st because of the holiday. Everybody get that? Okay. Let the record reflect. Next, members, item J on your agenda is resolution to approve the consent agenda. Chairman Pro Tem Phillips, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Ketchum. I've reviewed the consent agenda and find all the items that are on the consent agenda appropriate, and without objection or without a request to remove one of those items, I move that the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Second. Do I hear it? We have a motion and a second, Commissioner P. and Commissioner Johnson. Do I hear, we have a motion and a second without objection. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Vote.
On the board. We're on the board, members. On the consent or spend money. Please cast your vote, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
20 yes.
20 yes. Thank you. Item number K, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business at this time. Next, we move to item M.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Commissioner Gurley, you're recognized.
We could call this unfinished business, or we can move this to any other business, but I want to revisit what I said I would bring up to revisit. At the last commission meeting, we were wanting to get some clarification on it, and that is the matter of bonuses for our public safety personnel. So would you rather do this under unfinished business or move this to the end?
Well, I'll rule that it's unfinished because you brought it up last time, so we might as well go ahead and address it now.
It's my firm belief that, as I stated previously... It's my firm belief that, as I stated previously, that we need to do something for our public safety personnel. We are right now a training ground. This is a bigger issue that we're going to have to address in the coming budgets for the next year or two or three. One of the things I think we need to do is to get a process down that continually improves the budget or the pay scale for the public safety people, if not the whole county, so that we don't have to come back. Right now, the approach is, okay, people get, pay gets down relative to outside pay, all of a sudden, we realize we have a problem, we look to try to solve it, so we give some kind of boost, and then we go back and repeat that cycle again in four, five, six years. So that can't be done tonight. But that's something for budget and HR to strongly look at in the coming months. We have identified since the last meeting per a letter from the Comptroller's Office that pay, like we're talking about, whether you want to call it bonuses or premium pay, et cetera, for whatever name you want to give it, is allowable under the CARES Act.
Allowable.
Allowable.
That is correct.
And so we can do it.
That's correct.
The, going over late this afternoon prior to the meeting with our Finance Director, we've pretty well obligated the current CARES Act monies that we have in-house right now.
Correct.
So this, we will be getting the other half of that toward the end of our fiscal year, is my understanding.
That's right. That's correct.
So what I want us to do tonight, knowing that we don't really have the money to pay this immediately, is to commit the monies to this, obligate ourselves that we're going to look at these monies ahead of anything else. In other words, this is going to be, when the other set of money comes in, that's going to be our, that money's going to already be committed to pay these bonuses out. Personally, I'm thinking about a $2,000 bonus. Some of the other entities have given more. That's kind of where I stand. I think it needs to be defined, and we can further discuss that in coming meetings as to exact cost and exact who qualifies, who this should go to, should this, I've heard it mentioned that this should go across the board. I don't know that everyone in county government faces the same challenges that our public safety people do. But that's something that we can further discuss. But what I would like to go on record as committing tonight is that we, in future meetings, define that exact body of people that qualify for this, but that we commit us as a commission to paying this when CARES Act money is available. And I would make a motion that we pay a $2,000 bonus to our public safety personnel yet to be defined when CARES Act money funding is available.
Have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Gammon, does that just a second, or you want to speak?
I just wanted to, can I make a statement?
Sure.
Okay. I'm 100% in support. But I guess the question I had, understood where it's going, and I agree with Commissioner Gurley 100%. The question, I've had a number of phone calls from public safety people about the hazard pay and stuff, and I know part of that's what we're talking about. They just wanted to know, when will this come about? Now, I basically said it had to be through a committee process, Ms. Nolan, everybody to get all the numbers together before that can happen. But I think they just were wanting to know where we're at on it.
Okay. Let me explain where we're at on that. In the CARES Act money, we received $64 million from the American Recovery Act. The U.S. Treasury sent us half of the first tranche, what the Treasury calls the tranche of funding. That was sent to us. We applied for it. It was sent to us, and it's in the bank. It was sent directly into our account. Our trustee received it several weeks ago. Of that, this commission committed to authorize me to send the letter of intent to purchase the State Farm building for $25,500,000. We thought, right behind that, we were going to build six public health and safety facilities. Average cost, we don't know yet because we haven't put it out to bid and don't know exactly, but we have a pretty good number, somewhere around $5 million for each one of those. And how we thought we were going to fund it is in the second tranche of the 32 million that would come in next June, we were going to fund it and do a grant anticipation note and borrow from ourself. And through some conferences that Ms. Nolan was involved with, with the State Comptroller's Office, they looked at some of the language in that 152-page contract and determined that you can't borrow money even if you're borrowing from yourself. Correct. Yeah, we can borrow, we just can't pay it back with those funds. So that stopped everything. I mean, our engineer was moving forward. They were doing all the engineering studies, et cetera. And we were planning to put all six of them out to bid. So that put everything dead in its tracks. And so, as talked about in Public Safety Committee, we had to come back and say, we're only going to commit to one because $5 million on top of the $25,500,000, that puts us right at $30 million, okay? A little over $30 million. And we only got $32. So we had about a million and a half left, and it's not enough to make the commitment to our employees of what we want to, especially the $2,000 is where we really would like to be. And so I think you're on the right track, and you have my commitment, and I hope this commission will support that. And not just, in my opinion, I'll recommend to you this time or next June, that we do all of our essential employees, which we'll be allowed to do. Everybody, in my opinion, because it says that the mayor has the discretion to determine who's essential, I think every employee in our general fund was essential because whether they were working from home or they were on the front lines. Am I correct? Solid waste, ambulance, everybody was essential in my position, and that's what we'll do when we come back and discuss this. So next spring, late spring, so that'll be another $5 million times five, or five locations for our public health and safety buildings times $5 million. That'll put us at 30, and we should have enough left over to take care of our essential workers. But it kind of gives you an idea of where we're at. So do we have a motion? Is that your motion? Commissioner Gurley, is there a second? You've got plenty of seconds. Commissioner Rather, and Gammon, et cetera. Mr. Kush?
I was going to suggest that we make that a $2,000 net instead of a gross. But if you're going to broaden the net to make all employees essential, which I'm not disagreeing with, then I'm going to withdraw that comment.
Yes, sir. We ran some numbers, and we really, I asked them to run numbers on $2,000 net, you know, to where it was even to them, and they got it. But by the time we figured in all the federal withholding and FICA and et cetera, it was actually 4,200 per individual, and they only got 2,000 out of the 4,200, or 41 something in that neighborhood. It was a lot, which, you know, and very few, I don't know any private sector company that's ever given bonuses, and we can actually call it bonuses now, to where you got net. You always got a bonus, and of course, it was always the company deducted from that amount. But I think the commitment is here among this commission to take care of those folks who have worked so hard for us, all of our employees, and not just first responders. I want to class them as all as essential, if we could do that.
Commissioner Gooch?
I'm not saying I'm against this, but is there a reason this didn't go through
Not appropriate in many, I mean, it's not really, it's not really come through. But the way, to me, the way that y'all are discussing it, to me, it would go from y'all's committee to us, so that at the end, we'll have to amend it, get the money, get the amendment ready.
But it didn't go through budget, am I correct?
No, no, sir. We've not, y'all have just talked about this.
Yeah. I'm just very hesitant to vote for something like this if it didn't go through committee. And on record, I've historically done that. I know other people have brought things up without going through committee. I was for it, but I just can't vote for it without going through a committee with study unless there's some kind of an emergency timeline. Is there an emergency timeline?
I think Commissioner Gurley was saying that we should talk about it and talk about the amount.
I thought the motion was to go ahead and approve it tonight.
Concept that the commit to the $2,000 bonus, would you read my motion back? You have?
I need to make some corrections, but this is my notes. $2,000 bonus to public safety personnel yet to be defined when the CARES Act money is received.
And I think I included some wording in there, yet to be defined and discussed in future meetings. This was discussed at our last full commission meeting. I brought it up then. It's
Adopted in the budget.
Budget's well aware of this. Our Finance Director has been running numbers on this. So this is not on, people are, I don't think, if you were here at the last commission meeting, I was pretty passionate about this. And we discussed it, and the whole reason for not voting on it at the last meeting was to allow further definition by the Comptroller, which has been done. We received a letter, you should have received that, and allow our Finance Director to look at actual numbers. What is this going to cost the county overall in terms of numbers? And the way I worded my motion, I believe, was to look at this and yet to be defined. And I'm not necessarily against all employees, but if it comes down to, do we give it to all employees, or do we give it to public safety, then I'm going to be for the public safety people. And that's something that budget can take up and discuss, I think, fully. This is not, we're not going to be issuing checks to people in the next month or so. This is money that is not even going to be available till the end of this FY. So there's plenty of time to discuss it. I want us to commit tonight to doing this.
So the word, I'm sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Is the word "commit" in the motion that's going to commit me?
Commit to find.
Do something without going through a committee?
The motion that I have, and I wrote down, is $2,000 bonus to public safety personnel yet to be defined when the CARES Act money is received.
So I think maybe the hangup might be the $2,000, because that kind of locks you into the $2,000, and it doesn't give the committee the opportunity to massage it. And it might be good that it goes to Budget Committee and let them come to us with, okay, 500, you know, 1,000, 2,000, whatever it may be, net gross, or what are we going to do about part-time, what are we going to do about people who are at home, you know, all those things need to be flushed out. But I, you know, at what time did they qualify if they started with this halfway through COVID?
And I want to hear from our attorney if this motion is committing me to do something. And then I would like a response from the Budget Chair on his thoughts on this unprecedented
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Gooch. So as the commission, you are the arbiter of your internal regulations, and they do provide that you can suspend or modify or change them as the commission body. There, in terms of the word "commit," as Mr. Gurley said in his motion, he can probably be the best one to interpret it for you, but it sounded to me like you would be committing tonight to at least use the money from the CARES Act once received to go to fund hazard pay for the employees. I can present you an alternative option, which is still possible to do, and it could be to refer this back to the Budget Committee with affirmative support of the commission, that the money will be used, and how that money is going to be allocated once received is what would be discussed at the committee level. So at least you've got the approval of the commission, and it's in the same term been referred back down to the Budget Committee for further discussion as to how that money is going to be allocated for the hazard pay. That would be another option.
Thank you. Commissioner Blair?
I would also like to make a pitch, since we're in the discussion phase of this, that being a member of the Public Works Committee, that our convenience workers and our other public works staff members are probably far as hazardous being in having to handle the waste stream. And I think they're certainly due to have the same special consideration as our public safety professionals as well.
Yes, sir. That's why I said, I think they're just as essential as every other employee. Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, I have, whoever seconded my motion is willing to withdraw it. I can reword that motion to go along with what our attorney recommended. I thought in making that motion, I was allowing enough discretion to go back to budget and the final details, but if it would be better if I made it more specific, I'd be happy to do that, as long as we commit to the principle tonight.
That's what I'm feeling. Do you want to withdraw your motion, make a new motion?
I will, who seconded my motion?
Commissioner Rather and Commissioner Virgil Gammon.
Will you withdraw the second?
I will draw it.
Commissioner Gurley, back to you.
I will withdraw my motion as presented, and I will reword, I will reword my motion that we look at providing a $2,000 bonus to our public safety and other essential workers as determined by various committees, including budget, as to how that can be done when the CARES Act funding becomes available.
Second. Commissioner Rather, you're recognized.
I actually understood my second in the beginning, that this commission, and I've said from the day I got elected, our greatest asset are the employees, especially first responders, but even the convenience center guys, they're essential. So I understood, what I seconded was that we, as a body of commissioners, were committing to exploring that, whatever those dollars are. And I just had the assumption that we were just making that commitment, that we would head in that route and go through the processes, the normal processes, through budget and everything else. That's what I understood when I seconded the first one, but I may have misunderstood that. That was, I thought I had enough leeway in that first motion, but I think we do in this one.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? Commissioner Phillips?
Just one point, a clarification. I don't object to the 2,000 bucks being in there, but I'm not 100% sure that that money will be available. What if building costs drive all of our new public safety buildings up from 5 million to 7 and 1/2 million? That money may not be there. And we'd have to make a determination as to what comes first. I would support the motion without attaching, attaching a dollar figure to it.
Is that an amendment?
An amendment to that with excluding a specific dollar amount.
Got a motion and a second.
It was the second.
I'm sorry. Second, Commissioner Gooch. Discussion, discussion on the amendment.
Did they not recommend not to commit this money until we got the second half?
I don't think you want to pay for it until you've got the money. And we received the money June 22. We should get it one year later, so I would be expecting it's going to be June 22, 2022. And I hope by June, we've already got it ironed out, who we're going to pay, how much we're going to pay, how much these other things are costing, that we'll have a good feeling by then, what the commitment will be.
I think we'll have it all ironed up. Okay, we're on the amendment to the motion. Does everybody understand the amendment? All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries on amendment. Back to the motion as amended. Everybody understand the motion as amended. We're leaving out the dollar amount. All those in favor of the motion as amended signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item M, reports from standing committees. First report is Budget Finance Committee. Commissioner P., you recognize?
Okay. Yes, I'm going to drag our meeting out in just a minute, and I'm going to mention something we hadn't mentioned yet, most of you know about though. But Rutherford County has been awarded a AAA bond rating. When I came, became, and when I became the budget chairman, one of the things I mentioned was, that was a goal of mine. And it wasn't just a goal of mine, it was a goal of all of ours. When I became a commissioner several years ago, let's see, Bob Bullen, I think, was finance, or he was chairman of finance, and then Jimmy Evans became finance director, and then Bob became the chairman again, and then Joyce Ely, and then Will Jordan, and then myself. And during that time, we had Paul Long as our director of finances, and then he was succeeded by Lisa, which you all know. We had mayors Nancy Allen, Ernest Burgess, and of course, our current mayor. But what I want to tell you about this AAA bonding and what it means to me, this is something we've made, we've able to get there, but we've got to be able to stay there. And getting there was several people's fault. It was the budget committee's fault, mainly it was this full commission's fault for us getting there. Because you guys, under the direction of our finance director and our mayor, and I'm talking about our current people, have guided us and kept us within the guidelines that have guided us to this rating. Anyway, I want to applaud you guys that are sitting here because you're the reason that we've got this rating. You know, a lot of times, you've got tough decisions to make, raising taxes being one of them. And that's part of the criteria they look at, if you are willing to bite the bullet and do what you have to do to keep the county's finances straight. And, you know, that's something, yes, it's very tough to do. And there's a lot of times, I found out in budget a long time ago, a lot of things I voted no on, but I had to figure out, how am I going to pay for this since it passed? So a lot of you will find yourselves in that situation. But I want to applaud each and every one of you for the hard work that you've done, especially our mayor and our finance director. You know, we wouldn't be here without those guys and without y'all. Anyway, thank you everyone for this. Have got that behind me. We have a pretty short agenda for us, and the first item is, and first two items are actually grant monies left over from last year that were not spent. This is item M1A. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows, and this is for emergency rental assistance program. We've got a decrease in restricted fund of 7,633,059, and an increase in expenditures of part-time personnel, 30,000. Overtime, 10,000. Social Security, 2,480. Pension, 1,020. Employee independent insurance, 1,000. Disability insurance, 50. Employer Medicare, 580. Legal, 25,000. Rentals, 6,957,274. Other contracted services, 200,000. Utilities, 100,000. Other charges, 305,655. Next is fire rescue. This is a grant from, for smoke detector alarms that was left over just as prior one was. This goes back to our undesignated fund balance, and they're asking to get this money. On these grants, if we don't spend them, we're going to have to return the money anyway. So first, under the fire rescue, there's a decrease in unassigned fund balance of 651, an increase in revenues of direct federal revenues of 13,158. Overtime, 2,189. Social Security, 136. Pensions, 222. Employer Medicare, 32. Medicare, 6,263. And services for other charges, 4,967. Resolved this 12th day of August 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second on Commissioner Todd. Madam Clerk, if you would, please call the roll. Oh, excuse me, we're on the board. Yeah, we can do that now. We're on the board, members. Please cast your vote. Much quicker. It's getting late and I'm regressing.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk?
19 yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next item are both from our highway department. One of them, the first is for the Plainview School Roads. And this is basically getting the monies that they've spent on the roads into the right categories. The next thing that we'll look at under this same motion is the salaries. And basically, what they're doing is giving a salary increase to the employees at the road board. Mr. Brooks asked if he needed to stick around at the end of meeting to catch this. I told him, go ahead. So anyway, hopefully this will come out for him. Item's M1B. Resolution be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows for Plainview School Roads. A decrease in assigned fund balance of 927,235. Engineering services, 35,000. Other construction, 83,000. Under services for asphalt, 89,949. Under crushed stone, 41,535. Under stone, general construction material, 56,552. Under construction material, pipes, 50,000. Other supplies and materials, 30,000. And then under supplies and materials for right-of-way, 541,199. Under the next one, as I mentioned, this is for salaries. A decrease in assigned fund balance of 84,620, and committed fund balance of 13,490. Then we have increased expenditures under assistants, 1,570. Secretary, 4,700. Social Security, 390. Employer Medicare, 95. Foreman, 8,550. Equipment operators, 30,200. Truck drivers, 25,480. Social Security, 4,030. Employer Medicare, 950. Foreman, 1,565. Mechanic, 3,330. Laborers, 3,135. Social Security, 505. Employer Medicare, 120. Assistant, 1,565. Data process personnel, 1,570. Foreman, 1,570. Equipment operators, 6,270. Secretaries, 1,565. Social Security, 775. And employer Medicare, 175. Resolved this 12th day of August 2021. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Piercey, Commissioner Johnson.
Different functions.
Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, members, we're on the board. Please Board working?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk? Record a vote.
19 yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Carol, just to answer your question, we don't read out the numbers in front of, for instance, Foreman is actually down there twice. You were right about that. You know, I'd had to read out 131, 63, 100, dash 141, Foreman, and then the other number is different again. But anyway, that saves us quite a bit of time. And I don't think those numbers mean a lot to us. It's just that total figure. Anyway, thanks for the question. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chairman. Item number two, Health and Education Committee, no report. Item three, Property Management Committee, no report. Public Safety Committee, no report. Public Works and Planning Committee, no report. Steering Legislative Committee, no report. Members, before we go into executive session, I think we, without objection, we need to roll down to Rockville Public Health and Safety Building Resolution Agreement with the PBA. Chairman Reed, if you would, please come forward and read the resolution, please, sir.
Commissioners, you've already heard some of the things that we've already has gone forward as far as the public health and safety buildings are concerned, especially the fact that we are only going to be doing one currently right now, and that's the one in Rockville. Reasoning for that fact is a lot of the things have already been done there as far as things that's dealing with the actual building of it, as well as hooking up the sewer with the city of Murfreesboro, as well as going before both planning commissions. It's already been approved there. So the most work for the construction of that building has already gone forward. So that's the one we're going forward with at this time and working there. Within your iPads right there, you see the agreement that we do have with the PBA, and that's all that information right there. It's several pages long. I would read it to you if you want me to, but I think it's getting sort of late. I don't think you need a bedtime story right now. So I'll just do the resolution, if that's okay with you. The resolution is, whereas there is a need to construct public health and safety buildings in the county, and whereas the Rutherford County Commission, at its scheduled November 12, 2020, meeting authorized an expenditure not to exceed 537,876 for the purpose of hiring an architectural firm to perform architectural and engineering design services related to the Rockville Public Safety Building and the Kitterell Public Safety Building initial design services. And whereas the initial design services for the fore-said public safety buildings are hereby completion, and whereas the Public Safety Committee, in its scheduled July 26, 2021, meeting unanimously recommended to move forward with the construction of the Rockville Public Health and Safety Buildings Project. Where it is, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County that the Public Building Authority supervise and oversee all remaining aspects of the project. And whereas funding for the project will be from the U.S. Treasury, state, and local fiscal recovery funds accounted for in the Fund 127, other government special refund revenue fund. And whereas the attached agreement for design, construction, and furnishing project for the Rockville Public Health and Safety Building Agreement between the Authority and Rutherford County, Tennessee, provides for the Authority to supervise and oversee any of the remaining initial design services and all other remaining aspects of the project, including all materials pertaining to construction and furnishings. And whereas the Authority plans to utilize a construction manager at risk delivery method for the project. And whereas it is estimated that the cost of any and all pre-construction phase services of the CMAR will not exceed 50,000. And whereas the Authority will present to the Commission at a future date the guaranteed maximum price for the project, whereupon the Commission will need to approve funding for the same. And where it is, is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County for the county to execute said agreement with the Authority and provide the funding for pre-construction phase services for the project described herein above. Now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with the Authority, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein as it set forth herein at length verbatim, or the project subject to approve by the county attorney. Be it further resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby authorize the other government special revenue fund be amended as follows to appropriate funds for any and all pre-construction phase services for the project. Decrease, 127,34512. Restricted fund balance, 50,000. Increase, 127,91130706. Building construction, 50,000. Resolved this 12th day of August 2021. Mr. Chairman, so move.
I have a motion. Is there a second? A second. Commissioner P., any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk?
19 yes.
Motion passes. All right, members, it's time that we move into executive session. So I'd like to ask all all visitors and anybody in the gallery, please exit at this time. We'll come back in after executive session, we're being broadcast now. Members, Speaker Pro Tim Phillips, use your mic, please, sir.
Sorry, thank you. Just a quick statement, we've been in executive session talking about the ongoing litigation between Gertz and the county. No deliberations were made, but as a result of that...
Yes, sir. You're recognized.
Motion concerns the ongoing litigation settlement between our attorneys and one of the county's past insurance carriers, American Alternative Insurance Corporation, as it relates to the Gertz litigation, and the settlement entered into that case with the plaintiffs, and about which our attorneys have provided information to us in the executive session. It appears that there may be an opportunity to settle the county's insurance claims with AAIC under pertinent policies. Thus, I move that the county commission authorize our attorneys to pursue settlement with the county's insurance claims with AAIC as it relates to the Gertz litigation, consistent with the terms described in our executive session, and to enter into said settlement, if they are able to do so, consistent with the parameters recommended by them during our executive session, subject to review and approval of the final written settlement agreement by Rutherford County's attorneys and...
You've heard the motion?
Second.
Got a second. Mr. Bush, any discussion? Seeing none. Probably spend money, we'll be on the board, members, please cast your vote. Madam Clerk?
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Clerk?
Eighteen yes.
Motion passes.
Motion number two, this motion concerns the ongoing settlement negotiations with our attorneys that have been involved in the county's insurance carrier, Gertz Lloyds of London, and the apparent breakdown of those negotiations, and any meaningful contribution by Gertz Lloyds under the relevant policies as it relates to the Gertz litigation and the settlement entered into that case with the plaintiffs, and about which our attorneys have provided information to us in the executive session. Gertz Lloyds has elected to demand that the county arbitrate its coverage. Thus, I move that the county commission authorize and retain William Tate to serve as litigation counsel with regards to claims against Gertz Lloyds under the following conditions, and prosecute and defend the county's insurance claim to Gertz Lloyds relating to the Gertz litigation and so forth. Tate and other attorneys for the county are competing with the county mayor in this fight, and are on this litigation to create a legal dispute.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? We'll be on the board, members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote.
Eighteen yes.
We have one item left. Commissioner Key? Yes, sir. Please come to the wheel. He's got a one minute and 17 second, thank you, gentlemen. One minute and 17 second video.
He did ask how long that video was, and I told him one minute and 17 seconds. I've watched it many times. I have an event that's coming up, I want your input, I want your involvement, it's a patriotic event coming up on September 11th. I've been asked to direct this, so a friend of mine, Larry Maples, who is also a Marine, is co-directing it with me. It's a 5K run, but it's with the Travis Mannion Foundation. Travis was a Marine lieutenant killed in 2007, and his motto was, "If not me, then who?" And he took a lot upon himself. Anyway, they set up a foundation after his death, and they did a lot of events, and they're doing events nationwide now, one of which is a 5K, which is a 3.1 mile run, but there's also a fun run, and there's also activities at the city plaza, the Civic Plaza, on September 11th, early that morning. So, this foundation also, in the city schools, there used to be a DARE program, it's no longer there. This program called Character Does Matter replaced that program, and we're looking at the possibility of implementing it in more city schools and perhaps county schools. Great program, really well done. So, anyway, I've talked to a couple of you already, you guys have given me thumbs up that you'll be there for volunteers, just to be there shaking hands, just to hand out water, hand out medals, but just to participate in a patriotic event for our city, county, we all come together, I've talked to both mayors, fire, EMTs, police, military, and I'll give you a quick rundown of what it's going to look like. So, that's, you have to get up early, you have to get Pettis time, country time, but at about 7:10 that morning, when you're drinking your coffee, it's going to be quiet, and you're going to hear a bagpipe playing about a quarter mile away, and you hear drums start playing. You won't see it yet, but it'll be coming down Maple Street, because you're up on the city plaza looking down, and then it's going to be a solemn mood for about 10 minutes there as they approach, and it's going to be very humbling. And then when they get there, they're going to retire the colors, post the colors, and some other neat things will happen. At 8 o'clock, the gun will sound, there will be a 5K run. At the end of the run, we'll be, we're hoping for a number of 50 to 100, perhaps disabled veterans, but veterans from our local area that will be bussed in. That will be the gauntlet at the end of the run, they'll be clapping and waving and cheering for the runners, which in turn will motivate them as well. It's going to be a very patriotic event. So, there's a video queued up, again, it's just a one minute 17 second video, please watch that, and be in touch with me if you want to help get involved, or if nothing else, just be there on that morning. It's going to be really reflective of patriotism, and it's something we need to really enhance in this area. Thank you. On Saturday, September 11th, September 11th, it's actually, it's a 20-year commemorative, so it's a really important event. Thank you.
You're going to run the 5K?
Hey, guys, I'm Rod Key, and this is Larry Maples. We're both combat veterans, and we're here to tell you about an event coming up on 9/11 here in Murfreesboro. It's called the 9/11 Heroes Run, hosted by Travis Mannion Foundation. Travis was a Marine killed in 2007, his foundation was created by his family to honor his legacy of service. So, this event is going to take place, it's at the city plaza, and it's going to be big. We're going to have a 5K run, we're going to have a one-mile fun run, but most importantly, we're going to come together as a community, so we do remember 9/11 very vividly, but we also want to remember 9/12, because what took place the next day was us coming together as a nation. We linked arms, and we came together, it didn't matter what color, or what gender, what race, or what nationality, we came together. And that's what we want to do here, we want to revitalize the patriotism in this area. You can be a part of this. We need runners, we need volunteers, we need sponsors, just go to the link to learn more about the Travis Mannion Foundation and the 9/11 Heroes Run.
Are we doing announcements and...
Statements and announcements.
Would also like to invite everyone to the, it happens 9/11 this year, the Smyrna Rotary Club, for 19 years, has sponsored a fish fry, probably 2,500 of our closest friends were expecting this year. We're also honoring first responders, we've done World War II veterans, Korean veterans, the Persian Gulf, all of those opportunities. So, Smyrna Rotary Club has given back to nonprofits in Rutherford County well over a million dollars, and again, this is our 19th year. So, if you're interested in buying tickets, sponsoring, www.wof, stands for Wings of Freedom, smyrna.com, and you can find out, or you could call me, and I'd be happy to share, would love to have you be involved. We serve about 4 o'clock, we start serving, there's an auction, there's a cruise in, static displays, we'll be cooking about 500 pounds of catfish, I'm a cook. That's exactly right, you can run your butts off in the morning and eat your tummy full that evening, so we'd love to have you.
Anything else? Statements and announcements? Commissioner P, Chairman?
All right, actually got two. One is September the 7th, that's Tuesday, there's our annual county commissioners' regional meeting at Henry Horton. There's also other meetings in different areas, if you can't make that one, but I would encourage every commissioner to try to attend if possible. I think they start eating over there, they have a meal, and then the meeting, I think they start eating at 5:30. Anyway, usually, several of us get together and ride together, so if you haven't got a ride, don't know how to get there, call somebody, and we'll find you a way to get there. And the other thing, of course, I know you guys are ready for some ham breakfast again, they're fixing to start back up at Kitchell in August, the 3rd Saturday, and I think it's 21st, so from 6 to 10 at the Kitchell Fire Hall, we'd sure love to see you there.
Awesome. Any other statements and announcements? Anybody else cooking? All right, hearing none, thank you for your due diligence, this is probably the latest meeting that we've had, but it's all been worth it, thank you. All right, Commissioner Gerle? No, sir, I'm going to rule you're out of order. Please stand adjourned.